I've had one of the Open Means Act chapter of the Texas Government Code is minute. I called an order, meeting the Board of Trustees of the Austin School District for Monday, April 13th, 2012 at, I got 6:38 PM on my watch, might get a better time. The board meeting closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluations, reassignment, 6:41, that's our official time, pray AT&amp;T.
Do you say 6:41?
I did now.
Okay.
Evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline and dismissal of public officer and employee, including superintendents, evaluation, and new legal counsel to the Board of Trustees, deliberation of purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, deliberation of negotiated contract, prospective gift to the district, deliberation about commercial financial information that the board has received from business prospect, or deliberation of the offer or other financial incentive to a business prospect, or to consult with legal counsel regarding pending or content litigation on a seven offer or a matter which is solely legal counsel determined should be confidential in accordance with section 551 of the Texas Government Code, sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.077, and 551.071 respectively. Welcome, everybody. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll take that motion, please raise your hand. Passionately ask, we thank you very much. We're going to do the pledge, but I want to let you know Mr. Guzman is ill this evening and will not be able to join us. Okay, let us go to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight's a work session, we've got four items for discussion. The first item is, I guess, a progress report on the bond advisory committee. Welcome, team. Dr. Kersarfen.
Mr. President, trustees on the board, on March 26th, the Capital Improvement and Bond Planning Advisory Committee recommended that a citizens' bond advisory committee be established to address AISD's major capital improvement needs that would best be funded through a bond program. Since then, the CBAC has met five times to learn more about the district and facility operations. They've also adopted a charter and operating procedures. Tonight, the CBAC tri-chairs, minus one, are here to give us a progress report on the CBAC activities. We have Mr. Albert Hawkins and Carolyn Merritt, who are here tonight, along with our chief operations officer Lawrence Friar, and our executive director for facilities Paul Turner, and Ramon de Jesus.
His son unable to join us tonight because of, his mother had surgery.
Okay. So, the two of you are here to represent the tri-chairs, welcome.
Thank you. Ms. President, members of the board, and Dr. Kersarfen, we appreciate this opportunity to share with you some of the status of the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, and there's a PowerPoint we'd like to use as we update you on the progress that has been made. As indicated, I serve as one of the tri-chairs, along with Carolyn Merritt and Ramon, and we are supported by 31 other members of the community. And so, it's been a great group. We've started aggressively working on many of the issues that have been laid out, and I'd like to walk you through some of those pieces. I'll start off with the presentation, and Carolyn will pick up and finish it off for us. But if you would look at slide two, it gives you a little background, and as you know, the CBAC was established pursuant to your direction on May the 7th. It is a body that will be making a recommendation to the superintendent. We have worked closely with Mr. Friar as the chief operations officer, in gathering and understanding information and moving the process forward. If we could look at slide three, it gives the purpose of the CBAC, which is to develop a scope of work for a future bond program. We began meeting on June 5th. We've had bi-weekly meetings, and they have been full, full three hours or so, with lots of information, data, and conversation among our CBAC members and members of the district staff. The department representatives have come forward and provided us with their list of needs, and we have developed a real appreciation of the broad range of capital improvement needs that exists across the district, and it is pretty significant. To date, we've had about five meetings, and we plan to meet, continue to meet about twice a month for the next couple of months, so, as we move through it. If I could direct you to slide four, it gives you an indication of some of the areas of information that we have gotten information about already, but also some that we plan in the next couple of meetings. Particularly, you know, I would highlight that we've gotten information on academics, fine arts, athletics, and other district programs, new facilities and maintenance and systemic repairs for existing facilities. We've taken a look at future growth needs and school overcrowding relative to the demographic trends. We've looked at some of the energy efficiency opportunities that might exist for the district and other capital improvement needs. One of the areas that we will also take a keen focus on is the overall tax impact on the community of any bond program that may be laid out. We recognize that there is a finite amount of money that the voters would be willing to support, and so we're going to go through an intensive effort to prioritize those needs and present to you some strong options for seeking approval from the voters of the district. On slide five, again, it's a little bit more background about the CBAC itself. There are 34 members of the community. I think Mr. Friar and the rest of the staff did a tremendous job in identifying and recruiting a broad and diverse range of individuals to serve on the CBAC, not only geographic, but some of the knowledge and experience that they've had with the district and outside of the district. And we have participating in the CBAC committee, a number of folks who have served on the boundary advisory committee, the district advisory committee, CBOC, and budget and finance advisory committee. So, we have a lot of understanding about the district and its operations and its needs represented during the CBC, along with good representation across the district. So, we're very pleased with the group that's been pulled together for that. On slide six, it again reflects that we service the tri-chairs, and we presided over the meetings, and will continue to do so. Our committee members have formed a sense of feeling of trust and confidence, and so we're able to have full and fair candid discussions, and I think that's what's needed in order to really assess what the most critical needs of the district are and how we can go forward and meet some of those needs. And so, we have an atmosphere of open discussion and candid dialogue, and that's been very helpful so far. Slide seven, we've worked from a timeline that looks at a bond election for May 2013. There's an alternate timeline that has it at a different date, but for now, you know, we've established an aggressive schedule that will enable us to present back to the superintendent our work that would be consistent with that timeline. And so, that means that we've had an aggressive schedule that's been laid out, and CBAC members are willing to devote the time necessary to meet that schedule, and so we're moving forward with that. Our meetings have been open to the public, and we allow our call for citizen communication at the start of each meeting, and so that may be taking advantage of more as we move deeper into some of our discussions as well. But at this point, we're enjoying a good dialogue back with the staff and among members of the committee. One of the, on slide eight, it identifies one of the standard items we've had on the agenda, and that is that the chief operations officer gives us an update at the beginning of each of our meetings that tells us what has taken place in between our meetings, and also reviews for us the types of materials we're going to be covering during that meeting. So, it's been very helpful, and they've been right there and accessible to our staff, I mean, our committee. The staff has been accessible to our committee and able to answer or get answers to all the questions that have come up so far. Slide eight just gives a little background about some of the information that we've gone through so far. That includes looking at the history of past AISD bond programs, the work of the Capital Improvement Bond Planning Advisory Committee, and some of the lessons learned from the Community Bond Oversight Committee. Again, Carolyn Merritt will take you through other parts of our progress report.
Thank you, Albert. We have reviewed the systemic repairs for the facilities.
It is, yeah.
Thank you, Albert. We've reviewed systemic repairs for facilities at an in-depth level. We've gone over transportation, purchasing and materials management, libraries, and safety and security departments have presented their needs to us. We are also conducting an ongoing analysis of technology needs across the district. We have asked staff to give a comprehensive view of the technology needs that include library service and other departments, and what we have deduced thus far is there is no shortage of needs. Next slide. In order to safeguard taxpayer investment, the departments are being asked to both justify their needs and to provide us with a 10, 20, and 30 percent cut in case we need to make reductions. Late in our process, we know that we are going to have some very tough decisions to make. Having these reductions available to us as provided by the individual requesting department is very valuable, so that we don't cut something that they find to be critical, that we don't understand how important it is to them. The committee has also had a primer on demographics. The assistant director of planning broke the information down to a format that helped us to understand the complexity of the subject. Now, thanks to her efforts, we are keenly aware of the interrelationship of boundaries and transfers on permanent and functional capacity, and their ultimate impact on facility needs. We are scheduled to receive presentations on the needs of athletics, fine arts, career and technology education, and potential annual academic and facilities recommendations with long-term facility needs. Once we receive all of the reports from the requesting areas, we are looking to form subcommittees which will further analyze and prioritize the bond needs and then report back to the entire committee. We're also looking forward to a presentation from the chief financial officer to give us a presentation on the impact of bond debt on the property tax rates. Next slide. As the committee progresses, periodic progress reports will be presented to you. The next time we present a progress report to you will be on October 8th, and at that time, the following will be presented. A theme for the next bond program, as some of you may recall, our past themes have been children first for the '96 bond program, and the health and safety bond program. A status report on the preliminary scope of work, this will be developed after we hear from each department, and we will also report on survey results that will inform us of voter support for the proposed bond project. As Albert stated earlier, we are following the CBAC 2013 bond program timeline. On top of the twice monthly meetings we have scheduled, we'd be adding more meetings and subcommittee meetings. We are increasing the number of meetings so that we may thoroughly vet district-wide needs and prioritize the needs to safeguard taxpayer money. Above, for your information, is the bond program timeline that could prepare us for a 2014 bond election. Again, we are going to work to the 2013 timeline per the board's direction, and in light of other potential bond proposals by local entities in this jurisdiction. We welcome your comments and input, and thank you for affording us this opportunity to present a report to you.
Well, thank you too for both being here tonight, and thanks to all of the other 30-plus members of your committee that sound like they're meeting frequently and looking at a lot of detailed information. So, thanks for your efforts, and I know there's more to come. Let's open up for comments or questions from the board. Mr. Torres.
I too want to echo Mr. Williams. Thanks and appreciation to the members of the committee and staff for working on this. This is really important. We only do this sort of thing about every five years, maybe six years, and so it's important to be comprehensive and thoughtful in how we develop the recommendations that ultimately make their way to the board. And in looking at the material, and at least the plan as it's reported up to this point in time, there seems to be a significant emphasis on district-level information, departments, district-level departments, or the organization of the district from the district level. As you know, when we set up to develop the facility master plan, one of the important elements of that was to incorporate campus master plans and the planning that each campus has in terms of what they envision and what they would like to do, and as we started to develop vertical themes, vertical team themes, their planning over the past couple of years has started to take shape. Can you show me where in the current outline there is going to be time for campuses to incorporate not so much the blocking and tackling, as Mr. Williams uses the term, needs of the district that, say, construction management typically reports on and is provided for in the database, but more on the thematic and/or planning that campuses want to have in order to improve their planning for purposes of strengthening their vertical team and the facilities that would be needed to do so?
At this time, staff has already sent out packets to each of the individual campuses, and has asked for them to get feedback to us by early October, and so I believe this summer, the principals and staff are reviewing the campus needs, and then they will be taking that back to their campus advisory councils at their first meeting of the semester.
It's already September.
Oh, so in early September, so that at the end of September, we will be getting that feedback from them.
Could you just go over that schedule one more time? I'm a little confused.
The campus requests have gone out, and the principals are looking at over. The CACs will be addressing any other needs at their September meetings, and at the end of September, we're supposed to receive that data.
And then your review and opportunity for...
Inclusion in any scope of work. And so, one of the things we relied upon as a base starting point is the facility condition index, and that, of course, is available to each campus as well. And as I understand it, the staff has asked them to review that for any items that have been omitted, any other needs that they've identified at the campus level, and that will be submitted directly to us in September, and we hope that in early October, the CBAC will start with a process to review those campus-level needs that have been identified.
Okay, and I just want to be very clear that what I'm talking about is not what's in the facility condition index.
That's correct.
It's more the planning and value-added improvements that a particular vertical team or school might be trying to make their school better here, or to move them to the next level that may be beyond the standard replacing HVAC systems, or roofs, or painting, you know, those sorts of things. Because I think it's important that this bond certainly reflect the fact that, you know, we're really focusing on improving and strengthening campuses, and that the facilities should support the academic programs within those campuses, and so to the extent that there are different themes that have been developed at the vertical team level and at just campus levels, that the facilities certainly reflect that interest, that desire, and that way of improving the campuses.
Appreciate that, and that is consistent with the approach that we would plan to take. The use of the existing data is to avoid any duplication in the numbers in the request, so we've asked them to ensure that their needs are not already reflected in that data, and then supply us with those other...
Right, and that sanity check is very important, I agree. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Moya.
Thank you. To add to the comments that Mr. Torres was making, I want to also, first of all, thank you all for all your time. I know what it's like to be on an advisory boards, advisory committee, so thank you all for your time, Carolyn. But I wanted to ask about the athletic facilities, not only on our campuses, but our district-wide facilities, because when you look at the athletic facilities on campuses, they're drastically different from one campus to the other, and these would be either the practice facilities for the teams, or the fields, which are also the fields where the JV and, or all the sub- varsity teams play. And so, and those fields, more often than not, are not in very good condition. And so, as you all, you know, proceed with your work, and I know you're going to get a report from a group that's working on athletics, you know, I would appreciate it if you'd put some extra attention on those facilities to make sure that the facilities we have on the campuses are quality, and that those facilities make sure that, because in my view, those facilities tell the kids what we think of them and their athletic performance, which in my opinion translates to the classroom. And so, and for many students, that athletic program is what keeps them in school, so, and other extracurricular activities. So, I would just appreciate if y'all would, you know, keep an eye and maybe a magnifying glass on those, just to make sure that we're looking at it well, that we're giving that part of our campus facility as much attention as we are giving other things. Thank you.
And we certainly will do that.
Thank you, guys, for what you're doing. I know it's a lot of work, so. A few questions if I can. One of the things that's always something I want to check on on these kind of groups is just your attendance and how well the meetings are being attended. I know that with other groups in the past, it might have been somewhat of an issue. Can you just kind of give me a brief rundown of what it looks like from your end?
Yeah, I mean, from my observation, we really haven't had an attendance problem. There's been a strong presence at each of our meetings. I don't know how many people have had perfect attendance, although we do check in, but we haven't had a problem with that, and, you know, from my perspective as a tri-chair.
Okay. You know, it's important to me from a couple ends. I mean, first of all, I want to be sure that all views are presented in some way, and, you know, get to the table, and secondly, I want to make sure that the final product that we get is actually a representation of all those views, and, you know, for everyone to be there, it has to work in that way. The second one is about integration of your group with other groups. You mentioned the boundary issue that was out here, it's certainly something that I'm very interested in. I know we have a boundary advisory committee, I believe it's called. I also know that we have a facility master plan working group that's out there in some way. So, I'm interested in the integration of all these. Ms. Moya mentioned the athletics group, which is going to feed in as well, but how are all these working together so that you're not being overly redundant, everyone's knowing what's going on, that kind of thing?
And everybody's standing in their lane. Well, one of the things we have with the CBAC is the benefit of having a couple of members of the CBAC that are also on the boundary advisory committee, and a couple of members of CBAC that are on the facility master plan work group. And so, with that, they're able to bring back to the whole CBAC the status of discussions and the timeline for decision-making. I think the staff also has sort of diagrammed out, you know, the timeline for decisions that move through those processes and how they would all come together. And so, one of the things that we need from our perspective of CBAC is some determination around boundaries, so we know what kinds of demographic or enrollment levels we're looking at in terms of school capacity needs. And so, that's not the job that we've taken on with CBAC, and that's the responsibility of the boundary advisory committee. And so, we would defer to that group to move through that process and back to you for some determination, and we would work from whatever that determination is.
Okay. And you feel the same way about the facility master plan working group, that, I mean, you're getting the feedback that you need in terms of making plans for...
That's correct.
...housing facilities?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. It's unfortunate the board doesn't have a board-approved facility master plan, that would make things a little bit easier to go with, but we've been down that road already. Finally, I want to ask about capacities that you're using on your facilities. It's perpetual interest to me in terms that we actually have good capacity numbers that we're using for our schools, and at the moment, it seems that we have three sets of capacity numbers. The one that we used when we told folks we were going to build the schools, the functional capacity that's presented, and the permanent capacity of the facility. So, how are you resolving those differing criteria as it was?
Well, we've had our primer on that, and I think there's some more understanding that needs to be gained among the CBAC.
We're still in the process of really grappling with that. There are some discussions that have been held as to gain basically a baseline understanding for everyone regarding permanent capacities, as well as functional capacities. And to be honest, we really, that is definitely an area where we're going to have subcommittee groups on, because there has been some discussion about, whereas there is a knowledge that permanent capacity has to be used based on the existing transfer policy that we have, the actual capacities and the number of children that actually attend. So, we're looking at true enrollments and historical data to make projections, so we're still grappling with that.
I think there'll be some interest among the members of the CBAC of looking at what some of the limiting conditions might be in your core facilities, and that suggests that they might want to look more closely at functional capacity as being the direction we take. There's also some justification, obviously, for longer-term planning, looking at permanent capacity. And so, somehow, we're going to have to synchronize some of those viewpoints and come to some conclusion, but we're not there yet.
Well, I would certainly welcome that discussion. I mean, it's a continuing issue with me. I nearly feel that the way we're using capacities now is nearly smoke and mirrors to confuse people about, you know, what the true capacity of the school is, what the true needs are, how that translates down to adjusting boundaries as needed, that kind of thing. I mean, it does make sense to me to look at the capacity of the library, the capacity of the cafeteria, gyms, whatever, and say, you know, we need to adjust for that in some way, but it's nearly at the point, at least for me, where, you know, we're playing with sets of numbers to try and justify a need versus meeting the true needs of that particular community and that particular school. So, that's it for now.
Other questions, comments? Okay, let me, if I can, give you a couple things, one of which is I probably disagree with Mr. Snyder. I don't think we're using smoke and mirrors on functional and permanent capacity. I think we've, as you guys have seen, it's a very difficult thing to calculate. I think people are trying to do their best efforts to get to that number. It's hard to figure out, we've got schools that are configured in lots of different ways. I think some of the schools are smaller in the functional capacity, then there's portables, and there's the size of the land. It's, you know, even though it's not perfect, I think people are well-intended in trying to get to a roughly right answer, and I'm hopeful that y'all, who'll probably get a little bit closer to it, can use some judgment and try to figure out what's the best way to go to deal with the growth. Second thing, also disagree with Mr. Snyder, is the absence of a facility master plan, a 10-year plan. I think in a district like ours, particularly given the budget constraints, it's almost impossible to say this is what we're going to do over 10 years. The growth of our district is changing, and the demographics are changing, the programmatic needs are changing, and we know what the taxpayer dollars are going to be, and we're limited. So, we did approve as a board a facility master planning framework, which laid out this kind of process that you're all in, and then we try to apply that to the needs. But I'm personally, just individually, not comfortable saying we're going to have a 10-year plan set in stone, because as you guys are seeing, the demand far exceeds our ability to pay. ability to pay for it and what the taxpayers probably will absorb. Which leads to two questions for y'all. And maybe this is somewhat going to be a CFO question. Is there some way that we can look at, as you get, not today, but as you go farther down, is a layering based on tax impact? So, you know, if no tax impact is this amount, one cent is this amount, two cents is that amount. And then as you layer what you would include in it, no tax impact, one cent, two, you know, figure out what the, the sequencing might be in terms of the, the priorities that would fill in. So we have all these critical needs, but I'm not sure how much the capacity will be. And that will be a, having to get a sense from the public what their, the tolerance is going to be. But I have a feeling that a two-cent package may be very different than a four-cent package. But what would we likely layer in at those levels? Because that's going to be part of the conversation with the public, is the ability to go higher in tax impact may be partly based on what we're actually asking for.
That certainly is part of the thinking that we've had. And, and we, we plan to have a, a very interactive discussion with Nicole at one of our future meetings. And we've, we've had some preliminary discussions with her and recognize that she's identified a number of flexible financing options that might be appropriate for our consideration. And so we're going to go through those as well.
Right. She's going to be presenting to us, I believe, September 5th.
Okay.
One area, though, on the permanent capacity numbers that had, that has been an area where the, the committee has asked for additional information from the facilities planning is a lot of these numbers are presented as percentages. And as you know, we have elementary schools, some of which have a permanent capacity of 200 students versus the newer schools all have permanent capacities of 880 students. Therefore, when you talk in just percentages, it's very, it can be very misleading. So we have asked and staff has presented us with the actual raw numbers so that we can look at number of students impacted. Because when you talk 125% at one school versus a significantly different sized school, it can be very misleading.
Yeah. And as you said, the, the challenge is because of the, some of the footprints of the size of the school and the other capacity, you know, if it's that, 125% for some schools may mean lots of portables, some may mean not very many portables. I'm with you. So I think it's, I think understanding both the absolute numbers as well as the percentages is going to be essential. And then knowing that some judgment's going to have to be applied because not all our schools look the same. So the second, so big question is really the one you've talked about, timing. Because I, it's a pretty big difference between if you're shooting for a May 13 versus a May 14. I really want to get the board since, because I think you said the direction of the board, May 13. But I don't know that the board's really had much of a substantive conversation. And I know it comes into play relative to a TRE. You know, if we need an operational tax increase versus a bond increase. But for, it sounds like for y'all, particularly given the timeframe you're on, the sooner we can give a sense of timing, both for your work, but I think also maybe equally importantly is a public indication of when we think we're going. Because we are, for lack of a better phrase, we're competing with other local government jurisdictional, governmental jurisdictions about what elections will be held on what dates. And I think the city, for example, got out pretty early on November 12 this year saying we're going to do a comprehensive bond. I think it would be in our best interest to figure out when we're going to do it so that we can hopefully not overburden the taxpayers by having a lot of competing demands at the same election date. So open it up for board in terms of comments and thoughts. Mr. Torres?
One thing in my mind that would be important is, are we going to have to put the bill for the election by ourselves? Or would there be someone else? So in terms of May of 2013, who, who, what other entity would be on there to share the cost? Or would we be the only one out there? In which case, we're sharing the costs, very large cost, to, to have a bond election. So that, to me, is important in deciding between a May and a November election.
So to staff, I think there's already been a little bit of work done by Nicole, but it's updating the calendar of what, what do we know that other jurisdictions would likely to have and what might be on the ballot. We know that, for example, I think in November of odd number of years, this is not November potential, but it might be, there's constitutional amendments. So there's other things that are on the ballot. But based on what we know now, what's likely to be on the ballot, May, November, and May of 13 and 14, just to get a feel for election cost? Other, Mr. Snyder?
My observation was just going to be that the November ballot for this time around actually has charter amendments that could modify the, the city's election code and sequence. So in terms of being able to like, share the bill with the city, we may not know the answer to that until after November. Because I think some of those actually stipulate a November election date, but I think, I'm not absolutely certain. I think the 8-2-1 leaves open either May or November. But I'm not, again, not, not.
And I think they're looking to move to odd number of years too, I think. So it does have a date and a calendar flip.
Bottom line is, we won't know until after November what if anything changes there.
So maybe from the standpoint of Dr. Starf, you know, can y'all wait till after November for a decision about timing? Or do you need, when, how soon do you need to know whether you're shooting for a May 13 or a May 14 or some other date?
I don't know if we actually have that. I guess if we stick with the May 2013 election, we know that we have to maintain the meeting schedule that we've currently laid out. If it moves out to the following year, then we actually will have this knowledge base. And staff has discussed with us that then we possibly basically poll all of the committee members and see if they could continue on because most have not signed up for a two-year service at this point. But I think based on the committee members that we have, I think if, if their time is available, they would continue with us. So basically, if, if we would move to the 2014 date, then we would not be having meetings every two weeks. We would go ahead and spread it out.
So from a committee life balance, the sooner you know, might help.
Yes, please.
Be every other week. Okay.
And I, and I guess part of, part of your question was about a November 2013?
Is a possibility. Just, just make it clear.
Right now, we, as Carolyn said, we've set a very aggressive schedule that has us meeting about every two weeks to move through all of the information and data and, and start the discussion process. We're, we're optimistic that we can complete our work, but until you start that, that discussion that involves all 34 members, you really don't know how, how quickly it might go and come together. So, but we expect that we'll be able to stay on that schedule.
So let me open the board. So if there's, to Mr. Torres, but let's just assume there's somebody else on the ballot on May 13. So there's some level of sharing of cost. And is the board open to a May 13 election? Or do we think we ought to look to delay it outside 13? And what else, what else do we need to know to be able to give direction or input on that matter? Mr. Torres?
My thoughts, Mr. Williams, would be to go for a May 2013, if, if we're not absorbing the whole cost, go for a May 2013 election, wait until the legislature gives us some indication of how we'll be impacted financially after the legislature to consider a TRE at some later point in time. And that would be why I would want to have the bond election in May and then give some time after that to reflect on whatever impact the legislature has on us.
And the school finance litigation.
Yeah.
Okay. Because we know that won't be done by May. Okay, other thoughts? Do you have a, do you have, do you, do staff have a position at this point about, because I, I think you're, I'm sensitive to y'all's meeting schedule. We don't want to ask you to go along that worked that hard and then all of a sudden slide you late.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, we do not know at this time what the May 2013 landscape looks like right now. I, Nicole Conley, everyone, the CFO, and probably Zoe Griffith could work a little more diligently around that to see if we can unearth any indication in that area. But, you know, if not, then I would say we would be on our own. And right now, because there were so many things that were uncertain, even down to whether or not we were considering a tax ratification election for this fall and some other things that were kind of left over at the end of the school year and launching this school year, we don't have, we haven't settled on any position as of yet. But there, you know, with, at least in our early conversations, we were, and this is why, you know, we did move forward with the CBAC and did the, the other advisory committee work with the capital improvement and bond planning advisory committee because we think that May 2013 would be of great benefit to the district. And I don't have to tell Mr. Torres and others who have watched this more closely, we already know we have over $300 million of just safety and, what do y'all call that?
Critical needs.
Yeah, and critical need. You know, without even getting into vertical teams and academic programming and things that we would love to do. So it, you, it, I think it's also about the approach. Like, you know, what's the strategy behind how we might be able to present it? If it costs this much, do we do this much? And then consider something else later and so on. But we don't, we really don't have an answer for that tonight. And I definitely don't have an answer for who might be on the ballot for May 2013. But we can really kind of shake the trees and see what we can come up with.
And, and to Mr. Snyder's point, and correct me if my thinking is not right, Mr. Snyder, but assuming the charter amendments pass that have the 8-2 and 10-1 or whatever, they would still have to, oh, well, yeah, that too. But if they, if they did pass or if there was a change, there probably wouldn't be sufficient time for them to draw boundaries and do all the upfront process to be able to have a May election if they did. Is that right?
In, in the case of a May election, like I say, I'm basically certain the 10-1 requires moving to November. And, and either plan, I'm not aware of any boundaries that have been drawn in
Right.
any shape or form. So, you know, I, I seriously doubt that they would have time to do it by May. But again, I'm not absolutely certain that, you know, they both don't move to November as an example. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to look online just to see who has May 13 elections. And ACC does not. The county may, but, or the, the city may try and do something with their May election date. But it doesn't look like there's a landslide of elections coming in May 13 at this point.
Okay. So given, that's, that is definitely a cost challenge. But maybe what we can say is, can we presume that we will go for May 13? And we need, but at October 8 meeting, make that call when we're there, even though it won't be until after the charter amendment. But we will probably get a sense, if you can let us know what the charter amendments are, what they, the impact of those might be, what other jurisdictions already have elections planned. I'm thinking that, as I recall, ACC had a, I could be wrong, so hopefully no one may, but that they had talked about a bond election in 2014. So, you know, we want to just avoid competing with the city, the county, ACC for a bond election at the same time. So it might serve us well to be going forward, May 13. And then we'll have to evaluate whether we're the only one on the ballot. And if, if at that, is that still worth the cost investment for what might be a multi-hundred million dollar bond? And as we know, as you mentioned, which I think is important, the school finance rules are actually much more favorable to us on bond elections than they are for M&amp;O because there is no recapture. And that allows a, a bigger impact for the, for the dollar than a M&amp;O election. And I think I agree with you about waiting until we get a little bit more definitive guidance from the legislature, the school finance litigation, to find out what, what we're really asking for and what the laws will allow us to keep. So can we assume for the time being, we're going to May 13 and then try to make, come back and make a pretty clear call in October so you know what we're driving for? And then if it's some reason it looks like we need to slide, we, we go at that point? Other, Mr. Snyder?
The one concern I would have is that we have enough time to actually educate everybody as to why we need an election and, you know, make it clear that we're justifiable in what we're asking for, done a reasonable job of doing everything else to get to the point where we need an election. And, you know, I'm not absolutely clear that we're going to have that kind of time. I mean, I don't want to be put in the position that Houston's in as an example, where they've got a, you know, they just elected to go with a $1.99 billion bond last week in
That's a B, right?
in November. And that's on the large side, yeah. So, you know, I just think there ought to be enough time to justify this.
But my hope is that if we, by October, and we're in, I guess, trying to give a signal now that May, and if by October we make a definitive guidance, we've got seven months to basically inform the public. It's just a matter, I think the way I felt with the city is, I think I felt back in the spring, you know, they were going in November. It was just a matter of how much they were going. And I'm not sure they've even approved their packet yet, but they're going in November. I think if we can give people indication that seven months notice that we're going, we just got to figure out how much it is. And then we do it on the timeframe you've laid out, I think we can educate the public, I, I think reasonably well. And if for some reason we can't, then we, board doesn't have to move forward. But I think it gives us enough time if we choose to do a pretty aggressive timeframe. Other thoughts on this? Okay. Thanks to you, to Ramon, who knows not here this evening, but the entire committee for all your work. Sorry for keeping the aggressive schedule, but I do think that, that right now, 13 feels like a reasonable best guess for what the timing. And I know there's a lot of work to do between now and then. Staff, good luck. I know you guys are buried. And then we got to get some indication of what we think the public's capacity for a bond is going to be. And I know there'll be some work outside the, the bond committee to do that, too.
And thank you all. And we'd like to just let you know that one of our committee members is here in attendance with us. Ken Zariffis is here, so.
Hello, Ken.
Thanks for showing us.
He might be here for other reasons too. Who knows?
Baby sign.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. And thanks to your family for, for the support. They're probably giving you to spend all this time doing school bond work and other work.
Probably, yeah.
Lawrence, thanks to you, Paul, and the entire staff. Because I know you all, they're meeting, but y'all are doing tons of work on top of your, all your day-to-day job on these, once every few years. So thanks to you and your team for all the work they're doing. Okay, let's transition to discussion of the audit plan. And we're joined by Lori Lee, who is our interim director of internal audit. Thank you all very much for being here. Board, let me say a little bit of context about this, that you may recall, we've got an enterprise risk assessment going on with Gibson, which we have not had the results presented to us yet by Gibson. But Lori and the Gibson folks have been pretty aligned on their planning efforts. And what we've asked her to do is come up with a plan basically for the fall, to get us through the fall with our existing resources. And then we, as the board gets the presentation about the enterprise risk assessment, we can maybe make some determinations for the spring and beyond. But there's a lot of work that, that has to happen. We've got an existing team that's been very active. Our previous internal audit director, Oger Munoz, retired, you may recall, at the end of the summer. And we've been very fortunate to have Lori step in and take over on an interim basis. So thank you for doing that. And we'll turn to Dr. Starf.
Sure. Mr. President, trustees of the board, the president basically covered most of this. I just wanted to welcome Lori. Congratulations. And we're really thankful for your leadership during this transition. I just wanted to remind you that you received your confidential audit plan. And given some of the requirements we have under statute, some of these things can't be shared publicly. But what Lori is going to present tonight is the general structure of the audit plan that you requested. And, and that'll allow you to have kind of like the big umbrella of, of work that'll be happening this fall. And so you can just talk us through that. And we have about 20 minutes on the agenda total. So it's, and anything else we, we would do in a, in executive session.
The red light, the red light, if there's a little kind of gray button, if you push it, the red light pops on.
Okay. So this evening, we're just going to present the fall plan as you spoke of with just some generalizations. Okay. So what we did was basically provided in the packet several areas. One is the information of our charter. And the information has not changed. But we plan on, on our website, posted as the charter, but with a former superintendent signature, Dr. Forjone. So we plan on presenting to you and updated so that you may sign and, and Mr. Williams may sign. And we'll have updated signatures. So we provided the charter. We also provided in the packet information on the mission statement for the, for the internal audit department. It has not changed, but we just refresh your memory. Also, we have provided our objectives for the department for the year. And we listed those out. When we do a plan for the audit, we take the number of hours we have available for the audit plan. So we calculated, okay, back up to the staffing. We have one director position. We have three audit positions. Currently, we have one vacant audit position and we have one accounting technician position. And the staffing composition And the staffing composition we provided in the packet is on page seven. And basically, it gives you background information on all of us. We put a little blurb in there for each of us so that you understand who we are and what we make up the department for. And then, back to calculating the number of hours we have available. Mr. Williams asked me to tie in a number that Gibson's consulting group is going to show you, which is 10,400 hours. Basically, that makes up one position for an auditor, 52-week timeframe for 40 hours per week will come up with 2,080 hours. Five of those positions together comes up with 10,400 hours. And that number's going to show up on the Gibson's consulting group's number that doesn't show up in my report, so to tie that in. That is the number of hours if we worked every single day with no breaks or no time off. So, then we take out the number of holiday, vacation, sick leave, state leave, all those type of hours. And we come up with 600, 6,264 available audit hours for the staff to be able to audit for a year. And then, for the fall plan, which is a four-month period, we take out the one vacant position, and we come up with 1,600 hours available for an audit plan. Okay? And then, then we based our audit plan on working with, go ahead and go to the next slide. Gibson, like they spoke of earlier, Gibson Consulting Group came in and did a risk assessment, and we worked with them to provide our input. And they will be presenting that at a later time to you. But based on that, we've, the areas are the risk of the audits that we work on, the follow-up audits to prior audits. We have unplanned projects and investigations and special requests and projects. So, that's where our audit hours go to. Based on the risk assessment, we have three follow-up audits on the plan. We have four, three risk assessment audits on the plan and one special project on the plan. And then we have allocated hours for any, anything extra that comes up. And that will tie into the 1,600 hours that we have set for the fall plan. Okay? Okay?
And board members, there is detail for you all about the specific areas that they're looking at. But for public, we don't want necessarily to let people know before we get there what we're actually auditing. And we, this district is huge, and you can't audit everything all at once. So, you have to sequence. And the 1,600 obviously is a, given that we're looking at pretty much a portion of the year, and the fall semester is smaller than the spring semester, and we're looking at a full-year team. So, it's roughly how we get to 1,600 hours. Does anybody have any questions about the structure of the department, their objectives, what they're trying to do? I think they've laid out a reasonable audit plan for the fall, given the resources we have. The linkage, just I'll jump to the, what we, the Gibson folks haven't finalized their reports, so that's why they're not presenting to us yet. I think they've asked, they gave people a chance to weigh in and board members to call them and all that. But they're looking at the entire organization and where we ought to be focusing our attention. And what we're going to try and do is merge ultimately, more of the spring, the things that they've identified, which may or may not be the things, some of the things we've looked at in the past, to make sure that we have, we're really addressing all of the key risks of our organization. And that we also may need to do some staff training to help us, maybe some areas that we haven't necessarily looked at as significantly in the past that we, maybe we need to look at a little bit more in the future. So, that's going to come. But for the time being, we needed a plan for the fall. And I think Lori and her team, thanks for putting together, I think, what seems to be a sound plan for the fall. But we'll open up any questions or comments for Lori or the team? Okay. Thank you very much. That's even less painful than maybe we would have anticipated.
Thank you.
So, go forth.
Would you like to quit?
And can I, can I say for public, for the public and for our staff, internal audit is your friend? You know, these people are here to help, help our organization. They're not coming to, to make you look bad. They're just trying to make sure that we, as an organization, are managing ourselves well from fiduciary standpoint and looking for opportunities for improvement. And maybe some things they will find won't necessarily even be audit findings per se in a sense of a gotcha, but really maybe ways to improve the quality of our operations. So, these folks are really there to try to do a good job for the district, and it's an important role they play. So, please welcome them and know that they're on the same team as you are. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Let us, we, we are moving to a policy update, which is one of our, always a favorite thing to do as a policy board. That's Christarfen.
Mr. President.
Seven thirty-five.
Thank you. Seven thirty-five. Mr. President, trustees of the board, as you know, the Texas Association of School Boards recommends to districts the policies that they should update and confirm when there are potential changes in the law, especially from the 2011 legislative session, of which we all enjoyed so much. Tonight, Edna Butts, the district's director of intergovernmental relations and policy updates, will provide an overview of Update 93, which is the third of such updates from the most recent legislative session. So, Edna, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good to be back.
Glad to see you.
So, as the superintendent said, Update 93 is the third and the longest, I might add. It addresses many topics and includes 40 legal policies, 12 local policies, and four regulation policies. Explanatory notes for the legal and local are contained in your notebooks. As you know, legal policies reflect the legal context for governance and management of the district and are not adopted by the board, but help inform any changes the board makes to local policy. Among the topics covered by the 40 legal policies are dropout recovery partnership programs with community colleges, genetic nondiscrimination, reports of educator misconduct, challenges to instructional materials, financial exigency, student early mental health intervention, and suicide prevention, bullying and harassment, student records, and student expulsion for serious misbehavior while in disciplinary alternative education programs. Many of the recommended changes to the local policies are non-substantive, with only minor wording and stylistic changes. I will highlight those with substantive changes or that otherwise merit a special notation. The first I'd like to discuss is CW Local, which is naming facilities. And you will recall that that was the subject of a board dialogue session on May the 14th, where the board reviewed policies from several other school districts. And then the board policy committee discussed changes to this policy at its June 26 meeting and again on July 31. Most, the substantive changes that are contained in CW Local, which is in your materials, are the recommended changes by the policy committee. The first recommendation is that a district facility may not be named for an individual who has been convicted of a felony or of any crime involving moral turpitude. The second recommendation is that if, that if a facility is proposed to be named after a person who is deceased, that person must have been deceased for at least 18 months prior to the submission of that person's name to the board. The third proposed change is a statement to be included in the notice to the public when the board is considering naming a new facility, that the board is not bound to name a facility based on the number of people supporting a particular nominee. The fourth proposal would limit the renaming of a facility, the renaming of a facility for 50 years unless a school is repurposed or a programmatic change has been made. And the final recommendation is that the district may require that other parties bear the costs associated with the renaming of a facility or a portion thereof. And before I go on, I just have a few other remarks about some of the other policies. But are there any questions regarding these proposed changes?
Questions or comments? Ms. Prister?
It's been, it's been a while since June. Can you refresh my memory on how we came to 18 months on number three? The individual may be living or dead for at least 18 months prior? Did we, did we decide that or did you all decide that in the policy committee?
It was discussed in a, in open session, and it was discussed in policy, but the policy committee meeting. But it's also one of the existing policies in another school district, but I don't remember which school district it is.
Other questions, comments, or anything? So, I'm going to suggest you put comments, just, this is small, but that maybe living, comma, or dead for 18 months. Just so they're not living for 18 months. We just, okay? Small detail, but, okay.
Okay. All, done.
It's just some, some, some way to just, those are two separate thoughts. Okay. Other questions about that particular policy? Okay. Keep going.
Okay. Great. FDB Local, admissions, intradistrict transfers, and classroom assignments includes an edit to the note to reflect that a student who engaged in bullying may be transferred. Previously, only a student who was bullied could be transferred. FFH Local adds a new paragraph called gender-based harassment and provides examples. Existing policy has always prohibited harassment based on gender, but the Office for Civil Rights has recently emphasized a need for districts to define and provide examples of gender-based harassment. Those are the only policies that merit special attention because otherwise they're stylistic. The policy committee has reviewed Update 93. I'm happy to answer any questions. Our hope is to include approval of Update 93 on the board's August 28 consent agenda.
Dr. Christarfen?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank the policy committee and all the staff that worked on the adjustment to the bullying policy. I just think that is, when you talk to students and my student advisory group and kids who have weighed in on bullying throughout the year, that was a very significant change for us. And I just really appreciate the time everybody took to make that adjustment.
Okay. This is a little, a terrible comment, but I, bullying's gotten such national attention. There's a movie called Bully, and there's, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's out there, speak for this island, you know, that, that about how do we need to change the dynamics where it's not just bully that are effective, but you actually try to influence the bullies. And so, thank you for taking the lead in that in the policy committee. Other comments or questions about the recommendation for the policy update? Ms. Snyder?
And it's really more just a question of one policy, and it's EB legal school year. EB legal school year.
EB.
E, B.
B is a boy.
Thank you.
B is a boy.
Very good. Hadn't thought about that one, but it's equally applicable. And it's really more the bracketing of the code.
Which provision, which paragraph?
Well, it, it says HB 1555 creates an exception to the start of school year date. But it brackets it so that it applies to exactly one district. So, do you have any insight as to why we did not try and have this apply to more districts? Not specifically Austin, but...
So, it's EB Local.
Legal.
Legal. I'm sorry, legal.
It's in the narrative on page nine on that.
It's the one that lets Houston, lets Houston change the start of their school year, right? And it's, and I don't know, I, I can't ever, it seems like you've been in our lives since the very beginning, Edna, so I apologize. But I don't think you were here yet when we were doing all of our work exploring Apollo 20. Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Apollo 20 in Houston? I think it's tied to that.
It, it is. And I recall, excuse me, I do recall when I was working in the Senate, that this particular issue was targeted to the Apollo. I know Senator West tried to amend it to apply to Dallas and was not successful. So, it is Apollo, and I, and I really am not sure why.
My, my suggestion and insight, if you want to view this that way, is that some things like this, like adjusting the start of the school date or number of hours that the kids are in class, we might be looking at that as ways for, we can apply to our own campuses that have individual programs or individual things that we might want to take care of in a different way other than the standard way that we have to do everything right now. So, I guess the ledge committee might just look at this as something that we could try and carry forward and if there is an opportunity in the, in the future.
And we have a, a meeting on May, on August 23rd, I believe.
Yeah. Just confirm what you're hoping maybe, or at least for us to talk about is to expand, try to request an expansion or, of this beyond just Houston. So, that other districts have the same flexibility.
If we have a campus as an example, that it benefits them to start later in the year or...
Or earlier.
Or earlier, or go longer number of hours than what we have right now. I mean, just give us some flexibility to, to deal with things, basically, is what it comes down to.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, let's turn to the last, the work session item we have, which is discussion of single sex or single gender middle schools for District One. Dr. Christarfen?
Yes. Mr. President, trustees, this evening, you're scheduled to discuss the single-sex middle schools for District One at Pierce and Garcia Middle Schools. This is a continuation of a board discussion that most recently was had at the June 11 work session. But actually, the community engagement process has been going on over the last 12 months. The administration tonight is seeking board input and feedback and directions on how you'd like to move forward on any next steps. There is a PowerPoint in your notebook of which you have seen before as, like I said, as recently as the June work session. Again, it highlights the design, critical data about, you know, current students in the district, feedback from parents, students, community members, supporting and opposing research, and next steps that might be of interest if we are considering moving forward. But to give you a little synopsis of what's happened over the past calendar year, the district, after preparing in August of 2011, a pretty comprehensive point-of-view document or even a bit of a white paper, if you will, about a 30-page document after the concept of single-sex education, both because we had a potential funder, the Moody Foundation, for what has now been shaping up as one particular design, but also because there was interest in District One possibly considering single-sex education for the two middle schools. Either way, the administration started a pretty comprehensive lit review plus sort of a position paper to say that after doing all the research, that it did make sense for us to take both concepts and start exploring them over the school year, I mean, over the calendar year. And so, over the past year, we did just that. And we've been looking and talking most recently about single-sex middle schools in District One, with extensive feedback and guidance from the District One trustee Cheryl Bradley. The proposal to explore the idea of single-sex schools at Pearson-Garcia began in the 2011-12 school year, when we were working through annual academic and facility recommendations. Now, to, at the time, while there are many proposals being explored, trustee Bradley did propose to the board that the board should allow additional time for the proposal to actually be carried over into the next start of the calendar year, to be, to take more time to actively seek feedback from community members, parents, students, and school leadership. Now, the district has conducted multiple conversations with community leaders in District One, even with the public in general, because we have had a public hearing where anyone at any point in our outreach can come forward and, and allow for the trustee and the administration and any other board members that were present to hear their thoughts about the potential design. Now, the, there, the theory that is put forward is that single-sex schools in Pearson-Garcia could actually maximize achievement, learning styles, aspirations, and interests of students, while also meeting social and emotional needs of kids in a community that on its own has been plagued and challenged with many issues that spill outside of the school or perhaps from the community into the school. Now, looking at the larger context in District One, we know that the middle schools need a heavy lift in its, in its academic... the community into the school. Now, looking at the larger context in District One, we know that the middle schools need a heavy lift in its academic designing, in its structure, and outcomes to ensure that we're actually successful on another decision that the board made in 2010. And just as a reminder, at the end of that 9-10 school year, we made a decision to make LBJ and Reagan High Schools early college, high schools early college start. And so, in order for those programs to be successful, for kids to come in and be really ready for the rigor of those college programs, or the college programming and expectations in those high schools, the middle schools really need a lift as well. So, as we've done across the system, we've really focused on the vertical team, the design for the vertical team, with the high school outcome really being the driver for how we reach back and backward map our academic programming from pre-K through 12th grade in these vertical teams. Now, we know that if a program is successfully implemented, even if it's not single-sex, but any program that focuses on college readiness, we know for certain that aligning that academics and that culture of high expectations, including in a single-sex model, that it would contribute greatly to the success of the LBJ and Reagan High Schools. So, to remind everybody about the proposal itself, the design is pretty straightforward and it is, I think, the very first slide in your PowerPoint. Basically, we have two middle schools, Pearson-Garcia, that have independent attendance areas. You combine the two middle schools to comprise one attendance area. Middle school girls within this attendance area would attend one school, the boys would attend another, the other middle school. And of course, right now, we don't have any determination regarding which kids would be in which site, but we would have to wait until, you know, we're ready for the appropriate implementation year, use real-time data, and try to make the best recommendation about which site would be which. But that is the basic design. Now, there are a lot of other elements in the PowerPoint, and if you flip through a couple of more pages, you will see, again, starting on page six, the general vision, mission around the design. And you can see in the mission that it's crystal clear, we don't want any design for the middle schools to in any way stray from what would strengthen LBJ and Reagan. Now, on slides seven and eight, they're just, we've been all over the state. We've even been in our backyard, looking at our own single-sex school. We've been right down the road to Dallas and Houston. But we've also gone to other communities far outside of AISD, New York, Chicago, and I know I have a couple others coming up soon as well. But we basically have started taking prep, you know, rigor, or college rigor elements. And as we've been vetting this through with parents and others, laying out what the academies might look like, what the academic programming might look like, what the school day and other, you know, support elements of the school could be designed to have. Once we've worked through all of this, we have a general sense of the budget. Just to give people a sense of kind of how it works in a district, elementary schools, depending on the size, could be three to four million dollars for a budget. Middle schools move closer to five or six million. High schools get bigger than that, depending on the size. So, we know we have two middle schools right now that run at about a $5 million each budget. After you take out just what it takes to run a program, what we believe in the costs that might be additional is around operational and some adjustments to the building. So, you want all the restaurants, for example, to be for boys or girls, and you'd have to make some of those adjustments. But we believe after using the two existing budgets for middle schools, an additional $860,000 to support operations above what we incurred in 11-12, plus maybe some, about $400,000 of one-time expenditures. And again, we're taking the lead from these numbers, from what we're seeing as we're doing the research around the potential school for young men with the potential funder. So, we're kind of learning from both models, trying to cost things out. And then, there's going to be a number associated with transportation. If you have schools that are attendance area-driven and students and families make a choice not to attend that school, I have to do two things. One, we have to ensure that we have receiving schools that I would call alternative assignment schools, where kids could go and that we are prepared for those schools to receive them. The other piece then would be paying for that transportation for students to be able to attend those other schools. So, and while these numbers are not hard at all, what I, what we try to do is look at worst-case scenario, a midpoint, and a low point. So, when we look at transportation, if half of the kids decided to choose to not attend the new programming, that's about $369,000, and you would double that if everybody decided to choose something else. But we won't know these numbers until I actually start the school year, look at how many kids are actually attending, and then making a determination based on their feeder elementary schools, because that's the way I would, we would try to figure out where we would make those assignments. We wouldn't be able to, for example, just name one middle school and send everybody there. That would not work. We don't have enough space in any one middle school. But the key to this would have to be that once, even if a kid went to an assigned middle school other than Pierce or Garcia, they would need to understand that regardless of where they were attending the assigned middle school, they would be going back to their home high school of LBJ and Reagan. That's the only way we could kind of figure out how to keep the numbers working even at the high school level. And while all this stuff is still being vetted through, and I've got, as you heard from Mr. Schneider and the CBAC, we've got tons of planning teams and work groups, that's one of the things that, you know, that still needs to be worked out. We, I just wanted to remind you that within the PowerPoint, we have the supporting research and the opposing research regarding single-sex and coeducational settings. Depending on who you talk to, there's clearly a split in the field of research about what people believe about single-sex education. So, we provided both, so people could see the opponents and the proponents. And again, for us, you know, we've really tried to vet the design that is very attendance area-driven. There have been other things that people have raised, but the purpose of tonight's discussion, in part to give us feedback on any elements of the design. I know Ms. Bradley can speak directly because I think she's, I'm certain you've attended every single meeting associated with any of the outreach. So, she's been there in real time and can tell you what the exchanges have been like. But for us, it is, you know, what is the direction of the board, especially regarding, if at all, the board is considering taking any action in the next month. So, the earliest you could take action, just to be clear, is September 24th. I mean, so, you know, you can always hold a special meeting and all those sorts of things, but your regularly scheduled meeting is September 24th. We're asking as the administration, because of the Facility Master Planning Framework, that the board not make a decision later than December 17th, because that would be by far the latest we feel like we could even come close to preparing all the things necessary for families so they could make the decisions they would like to make for their child. But if it is as early as December 24th, you know, I'm sorry, September 24th, I just want the board to know that, you know, we are prepared. I have, it would be a 45-day countdown to make sure that anything that's raised tonight and any outstanding questions or issues, we try to close the loop on all those things and that we work that plan every single day to ensure that the board has things in a timely manner so you can make any decisions that you see fit for these schools. But those are the highlights of kind of what we have at this point. And other than your June meeting, this is really your first time to be able to talk about this more extensively. So, the administration is prepared to answer any questions you have. And again, you know, if trustee Bradley has anything she'd like to add, that might be a benefit to you.
Okay. Let's open comments or questions. Thanks, Dr. Starfink. Ms. Torres.
Dr. Starfink, first question's an easy one. How many students do we have at Garcia and how many students do we have at Pierce? Or what's their typical enrollment that we're basing all this on?
Right, the typical enrollment, as we've seen over time, is around 1,100 total, but last school year it was closer to 890. Am I right about that, Paul? It was around 900. We, I think it was like right around 900.
For both schools?
For both schools. And it's typically split between those two. Yeah, so, just to remind everybody, remember we held back some sixth graders and some other things? So, there was a dip, but I anticipate that we're going to be back to, you know, I mean, you can assume, you know, about 1,000 kids, but I won't know the count until we start the school year.
But this would assume three grades?
Yes, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at both sites.
Okay. You've provided in your narrative some costs that are not identified in a table. Could you put those together for us? Because what I'm trying to understand, I know there will be greater costs than if we had the current model there, but those greater costs are the result of potentially two things. The additional cost for the school itself, but also the additional cost for having to transport students to other schools. And that cost will certainly vary according to how many students we have to transport and to which schools and that sort of thing.
May I just clarify one thing, Mr. Torres? I think it falls in three buckets.
Okay.
You know, so, we say the school, you know, there's going to be some work around, you know, like academics, the curriculum itself, training teachers.
Right.
What we might have to do around recruitment of the right teachers, you know, we might want to, which is what we would, what we did in the Anne Richards model, we might want to, which I highly recommend, hire the principal early, have them working in advance of an implementation. So, there's all this like academic, what it would take to make, get all the program and the people up to speed. Then we've got a bucket called operational facility improvements, modifications, to make it more appropriate for the design. And then the third bucket that will be equally as significant is the transportation bucket.
Okay, yeah, so if you can put those in a table and, you know, and I understand they're estimates.
Yes.
To some extent, so we can see, because I think when they're all lumped together, people don't understand, oh, it's a million dollars, you know.
And Mr. Torres, even, you know, every step of every meeting except this one, y'all may recall that we have those fact sheets, right? And we always update them based on the next round and the next round. The, so, we have a longstanding fact sheet with all the numbers minus transportation. And even tonight, I was like kind of squirrely about wanting to do the transportation numbers just because it's right now a moving target and I didn't want to inflate or underestimate. But we have made a point in our work group, right? We're going to do some scenarios on it and make sure that at least we are able to show y'all in the fact sheet, the update with those things. So, yes, we will do it and, but if you're interested in seeing some of your, some of the things we presented before, it's always at the bottom of every fact sheet for an AAFR, but we will, we will add these.
Well.
Update them.
But this one is a little different in that in a table, you would sort of have your baseline cost, in other words, if you were just operating the school the way it currently is. And then you would have certainly the modifications that are required in year one and training that are required in year one. And maybe some of those trainings are required as recurring activities, but then you have, in any given year, the delta in transportation costs to get kids to the school that would be going to the school, but you also have the delta in transportation to take the kids that chose to not go to the school.
To the new assigned school.
To the new assigned school. And even if you don't have those numbers, if you'll just put a box there and say, you know, to be determined or, you know, still being worked on or something, so that we know there's a number there and it's a non-zero number, and we know how the various costs break out.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you. The next few questions I have, one is, there were a number of schools that were visited in other areas and they were summarized in one of the tables. Could you include where those schools were, not tonight, but just provide us the cities for some of those schools? Some were known, like the Anne Richards School, but others were not included in the.
Mr. President, trustee Torres, some of them are listed on page 19.
Right.
Where it says like Dayton, Ohio, Brooklyn, New York, Stuyvesant, that, right? They are, so you're saying for the, and the point of the page 20 was to show the curriculum model, but you're saying right here on these, added here.
Yeah, just put it in parentheses.
That's what I know we're talking about.
Right.
Okay, right here. So, page 20 and 21, where we have the academic models.
Exactly.
Named the geographic location.
Because to me, the success of a school has a lot to do with the community that it's in, and so, knowing where some of these communities are, at least affects my thinking.
Okay.
And then, and I know I'm getting old, in fact, I'll hit the big 6-0 this year. But some of the.
You look great.
Yeah, that's right. Almost didn't make it to 6-0.
I'm there, but it's an IQ and I'm going down.
Some of the charts and the numbers were kind of hard for me to read. My double magnifying glass didn't quite get there.
Even on an eight and a half by 11.
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Oh, it is kind of blurry.
Yeah, that's it, blurry. But as I looked at, as I looked at some of the numbers, there seemed to be a pattern that, at least in the numbers that are reported, that there's, there seems to be a lot of opposition to the plan, particularly from some of the students. But I guess the question I have is, and that's understandable because, and I guess now I'm going to ask my geek question, what's the error in these surveys? Because, you know, some of them where they're close or whatever, you know, the error of the survey may toss it one way or the other. And so, without knowing what that error is, some of these numbers could be a toss-up. And so, if you include the toss-ups, you include the people that are against it, I guess my question is, what are you getting the sense of the community's support for these models or the model, I guess it's really a model because it's put together?
Mr. President, trustee, the board trustee Torres, and I, you know, and I know Ms. Bradley, you know, I mean, there's the survey stuff and there's a lot of commentary that's been happening out in the community, of which I think Ms. Bradley's been much more privy to than I have. But I just want to be clear that the first, you know, and again, none of these surveys, I would say, are statistically significant, right? We've, at every community meeting or every time we do any outreach, you know, we try to, you know, just survey who attended to get some feedback and a read on each meeting. On pages 24 through 27, I would dog ear these pages and say, just so that you know, these are especially here in the English, Spanish, but this December 2011 telephone survey, that was the one, you know, we wanted, and when the time is right, because in this, depending on what the board decides tonight or the direction you give us, we're prepared to kind of continue to do the drill down. In our minds, we look at those who will be affected the most, parents and the students, right? But not just everybody in the vertical team, those that will be coming into the program. That's a whole special bucket in and of itself. And then there are a lot of community people, some people are advocates, some people, you know, always weigh in on public education, no matter what it is. I mean, there's a lot of different other buckets of. I mean, there's a lot of different other buckets of feedback that we're getting. This survey is probably the closest to what families are speaking and where I actually have real feedback from both English-speaking and Spanish-speaking families, right? So when, when we were looking at this, I mean, you can look on the right side, just look at the columns, right? People could self-select how they wanted to take the survey. So if you look at the numbers, 763, 810, you're talking about half and half, some, you know, 50% English-speaking, 50%, you know, Spanish-speaking, a little bit more. And then you can see those who made, you know, hard yeses, maybes, and no's. So what I feel like, you know, we need to do after, you know, having these discussions and going a whole year, this was pretty early on, this was in December of 2011. We need to do a second round, again, but in being really thoughtful about the structure and who we're targeting and asking. Because there, and to kind of like give you a sense of that, plus what is here on student results, these were outgoing eighth graders and the existing seventh graders. So, and we did not get a chance to survey the sixth graders, who would be there and probably, you know, have the, you know, the program the longest. So none of these, you know, in my opinion, are exactly spot on. And we don't, and we didn't have, and we don't have what I would say, the numbers other than this survey right here that specifically allows parents to self-select. Like I have a, I have a third grader that's going there and I know they're going there. And if you have this program, I'm going to continue to send my kid there. So I don't have that kind of specific information. But I see that second survey, it's self-reporting students, seventh, and there'll be eighth graders this year and the other eighth graders have already, the other, the eighth graders that took the survey are already leaving. And then, and then we have, you know, public comment. And to get to more of a Austin general community feedback piece, I haven't seen as much support when you're talking about people who are just from all over the city, representing many different groups. The closer we get to the school and the parents and the community there, I don't have any hard numbers, but I am seeing that there is a difference between what Spanish-speaking families want and what English-speaking families want. Spanish-speaking families tend to support it more. I mean, the whole thing, uniforms, you know, really, you know, taking these critical years and separating kids for, you know, the purpose of really helping them through the transitional middle school portion and helping them get their academics sorted out. And then, and then it's split more with English-speaking families. So, you know, you saw some of the numbers, like it's 53%. And then when you put the maybes, it's closer to 80. But when you average them, it's not the majority. It ends up being more like, you know, the yeses and stuff end up being, what was it, like 40-something percent? And Ms. Bradley, I mean, I don't know if you want to weigh in, but, you know, but we've, you know, we've seen a lot of community feedback. I mean, some people, it's really, for me, it's just really hard to tell in this community because people will say, y'all absolutely, you know, this is something the community really needs. We really need to take care and address things like teen pregnancy, you know, drugs, you know, just all kind bullying. I mean, there's so many things that get put on the table. Do something, do something. And then there are others that say just the opposite. So, and I don't know what else you've heard.
Not sure what else I can add to this. We've had several meetings. We even had a town hall meeting that didn't particularly go the way I was hoping it would, it would go. We had a platform guest and I was hoping that, you know, the speakers would, the platform guests would be able to actually educate or help parents understand what could be the benefits or, you know, and I didn't have any one person that particularly agreed or disagreed. And I made a point that we weren't there to sell people on, on single gender school, but that we would inform them about what it could be, what it could, it could possibly be for their children. And we had various people from UT and parent, parent from Ann Richards and students there and principal from Webb and Dobie. And it ended up not particularly coming out the way I was hoping it would. And it ended up being pretty much what most of our meetings are when people get the opportunity to come to the mic and that's basically tell us what their concerns are. What I did hear afterwards and even feedback from some of the various articles that have been in the paper, I have been encouraged to continue. What I wanted to do, because if it had been left up to me, this would have come before you all in June. After the town hall meeting, I do believe that there need to be just a step back, one step back, not a lot, just one step back, because I do believe that there need to be some information out there to the parents because I want them to make an informed decision for their children. But I don't want anyone to make the decision for them. I want them to be able to make that decision for themselves. I still believe, and I will always believe, that this is the right way to go because I believe that we have to provide our children an atmosphere that is conducive to teaching and learning. I think that if we separate those two genders, that we can bring that. I keep thinking back to the Appleseed research and it was the prison to pipeline. And even after that, there's been two research that has been, I think one is getting ready to be released from a university in California and then the one that Texas A&amp;M did. And if you look at the research, the research says the same thing over and over all the time, but yet and still, we continue our same practices. The research says that we need to change something that we are doing, but we continue our practice. What I'm hoping that once we separate these schools is that we can actually bring in not only strong academic program, but some of those soft skills that Richard Franklin talked about, especially with his program. And when we talk about, we have our character, character skills, character building skills. You go into elementary and you'll see all the little respect and so forth on the walls. Well, you'll see respect. Well, I believe before you can give respect, you have to respect yourself. So it's working with our children with self-respect, conflict resolution, knowing that everything is not a battle. Helping them to navigate so that some things are not fisticuffs. Some things are just actually being able to articulate what your, what your stance is, what your platform is. Brotherhood, I mean, I've said this before, we have divisiveness in our community, but actually looking at each other just because the outside is different. The inside is the same and we still face the same challenges and issues and we share those. But how do we work together to overcome those? The rites of passage for boys, I mean, especially boys of color, that there's a pathway that you have to walk and helping them to navigate what that pathway is. Knowing that there are some things, being a single parent raising a boy, there were some things that I had to teach my son that, that other people did not. That if they were in a car, if he was in a car and he was driving and he stopped, he was stopped by the police, that the first thing that he did was put his hands on the steering wheel. And he didn't do anything else but put his hands on the steering wheel. And you looked the officer in the eye. And, and those are things that I had to teach my son. Because I know that going through this city and any city or any state, that he's not going to get the same type of opportunities or respect that your child may. So I know that there are some things that I had to teach him. And some of our boys don't have the opportunity or don't have that person that can teach them those things. I had a list of things that I had just started thinking of, just the tenacity to know that the situation that you in right now was just that, it's a situation and it can be overcome. We talk about, we have people who say, well, the issue is not particularly a certain thing. Low performing, the low performance of schools has a whole lot to do with poverty. I believe that there's a, that may be a component of it, but there are other things that go into that. And I believe that we have to ensure that our children know what that, those things are and then help them to deal with those things as well. And it goes back to something I heard you say, Mark, when you talk about soft skills. And we have the research with, you know, Dr. Bigler and whatever. But I honestly believe that when you look into the research, that it does not take in to consideration those other things that our children just have to be able to learn and know how to do. And just, I believe that it can be taught in a single-sex setting a whole lot better than in a co-ed setting because what a boy is going to have to understand about being a man, that's not going to be something a girl is going to be that interested in. But then also our girls need to learn some things too, that they are wonderful creatures. And there are so, there are so many things in this world that they can accomplish, but they have to have the opportunity to do it and they have to be in an environment that's conducive to that. And I believe that if we can separate it out and just focus on those two issues, that we can actually get our children prepared to go on to LBJ and Reagan so that they can take advantage of the early college start program. But they have to be prepared to do that. And I just think that this could really be a game changer and just change the face of education for the children in that community and any child who actually wants to, to come to the school.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder and then Ms. Moya. Ms. Moya.
Dr. Krasniewski, I was looking at the, the survey results, the student survey results and I was noticing on question number one, the response counts. And if it was the outgoing eighth graders and existing seventh graders, it looks to me like the numbers of the students that actually responded were pretty low. If it was 300 and, even with my glasses on, Mr. Torres, I can't tell what that says. 300 and here, can you see?
I can read it. Which one?
These.
305.
305 from Pierce and 164 from Garcia. Those are magic glasses. I think I need some of those.
If you.
And so, stop. It's not that much more younger. Is this harassment?
Age discrimination.
Is that, is this age discrimination? Does that what?
Let's not say that's what it is. Joking around with each other.
So, it seems to me that the numbers are fairly low of the, of the student responses. And so, so I'm not quite sure, because I, I mean, I do like to know what, what the students think, but I, I'm just a little concerned about, concerned about.
The response rate, is that what you?
Yeah, well, those time about the question number one where it says, what's the name of your school? So that's telling me that's probably the, you know, that's, that's the baseline, at least, of a number of students that were responding to the survey.
So, yeah, so the first thing, remember, it's not all grade level.
Right, I was saying outgoing eighth and existing seventh.
So I've just got to stop and back myself up for a second. To be specific about each one of the schools, Garcia was only seventh. Is that correct?
Oh.
Okay, yeah, so it was only seventh. We didn't get to all the kids.
We didn't do outgoing eighth graders at Garcia?
No.
Only seventh grade.
Right. And then for Pierce, sixth and seventh. So it was sixth, not eighth. All right, so when I talk to people today, to make sure my talking points are right, so you have confirmed it was not what I just said. Thank you.
So what was it?
Dr. Cruz.
Dr. Cruz.
So Pierce was sixth and seventh. And Garcia was only seventh.
Okay, so at Garcia.
And these, so that means everybody who was surveyed is still there at the start of this school year.
Okay. But how many possible respondents were there? Was, are there only 164 seventh?
No, no, we wouldn't, no, that wouldn't be everybody. We didn't make everybody. We went, you know, we had one class where there was, you know, time. And so we went to where there was available time, you know, ideally without disrupting any instruction, that kind of thing. So it just was what it was at the touch point in the year. And that, part of that is why, you know, I feel like if we, if we go back and do the post-serving or the post-testing, like this is the time for us to get incredibly specific and make sure we take the time to do it and we really, when we did this for the School for Young Men, how many months did it take them? Yeah, it was like, no. He want, but it took about, it took a solid two months of surveying and work and reaching out to parents and those kinds of things. And that's what TASB did full-time. I mean, that's their full-time job in this department to do those things. And it costs a significant amount of money. So in our surveying, we've been doing it ourselves. But we can build and really try to target a post-survey. And, you know, we won't, you know, we can always, you know, do the universe, but if you really want to know what affects the parents and the kids, we would want to go for all those people that are rising up into this programming. And let's say the implementation year is, you know, 13, 14, or 14, 15, pick an implementation year and then back ourselves out of that and start targeting from that family group backwards. Sorry for the confusion on the grade levels.
That's okay. I was just trying to figure out how many possible respondents there were and looking at the, at the bottom line, which was reported in the newspaper. You know, it, it, this isn't as significant of a number or response as some would portray it to be. So that was my only question. But I do have a question for, for Mr. Hicks. Do you mind coming up to the mic, please?
Hi, Gilbert. Welcome. Since you've been a principal at one of these elementary schools that feeds into these middle schools, particularly Overton feeding into Garcia, I was, I'd really like to know from your experience with these children that would be going into this program, how do, you know, what, what in your expertise do you feel, or how do you feel this would benefit these kids? Is it red?
Testing?
Pull it a little bit closer to you.
Well, we actually at Volmoverton last year did host a couple of all-boys and all-girls classes in fifth grade. And the results were positive for us at the school. Dr. Krasniewski and Dr. Cruz were able to visit at the beginning of the year and we talked to the kids and they were really able to, they were very articulate about why they, so far, at the beginning of the year at least, were pleased with being in those classes. We saw less distractions and the girls and the boys both reported it. They didn't deal with the boy-girl issues as much and for that, they were pleased. They did have an opportunity to mix throughout the year in lunchtime and in their special area classes. So it wasn't totally separated. But they generally reported positive results and enjoyed the experience. From a principal's standpoint, we had outstanding teachers in those two classes. They were, they were picked to teach those classes. So that is really important to have the right person in front of the classroom. So we were okay with it and we really enjoyed the experience and the kids reported positive results.
And for the teachers that were teaching those classes, what kind of? And for the, the teachers that were teaching those classes, what kind of, of reports did you get from them as far as their experience, how they thought, you know, the, the kids reacted to it positively or negatively?
Well, it was quantitative data and qualitative data, I mean, the qualitative data is that the teachers reported that the classes seemed to be less, less distractions in the classroom, that was what I kept hearing more and more often because the girls were able to build rapport with one another and had better peer interactions and the same thing happened with the boys and quantitatively, the test results were positive. We, you know, of course, we're in the start year, so we can't say what, what the, a clear definition of what positive is, but when we compared ourselves to other grade levels in the school and, and across schools, the, the results were positive.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry for putting you on the spot that way, but I wanted to take advantage of the fact that you were here.
Okay.
To ask you for your experience.
That is teacher for coming to a board meeting.
Thank you.
Well, your name was on the presenter's list, you know, so I figured you weren't going to be too surprised. Thank you so much Gilbert. So, and on our assignments of, of alternate schools, are the, are they, would the families that, that decide not to participate in the single gender school, do they pick from a list or do we assign them the school?
Right, Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, Trustee Moya, that's a great question that we've been wrestling with ourselves, the, the bottom line comes down to how the numbers work out in the existing space. So, the range of schools and it may be in the agenda item, were, I think it had to spread over four other middle schools.
Yes.
Lamar, Dobie, Help Me Paul, Martin and one more, I already said Lamar.
Dobie, Webb, Lamar and Martin.
And that, the reason we came up with those in large part was to continue with the more natural feeding feeder pattern of, or second most natural feeder pattern coming up through the elementaries. So, we didn't want to take kids too far out in the way, you know, it would help reduce transportation costs and those sorts of things, but like I said, the key to this was to ensure that after the middle school years, that you had to come back to your, what would have been the feeder school for Pierce and Garcia to go into LBJ and Reagan.
For high school.
Yeah, for high school. So, and again, that might change a little bit, we're just still trying to work through, playing it all the way out, what would happen if, what would happen if, what would happen if, and following buckets of kids that we know were in the system last year.
Okay, thank you, and the only other comments I would have, would go along very closely to what Trustee Bradley was saying, because I, I honestly believe that given the, the last many years of, of data that we have showing the, the academic movement in those campuses, it's apparent that, that something's got to change. The current structure is not working. What about that current structure is not working, I can't say, but I, I can say based on the information we have, with these schools being unacceptable, that the current structure doesn't work. And so, some, we do have to change something. And, and to, to piggyback on what Ms. Bradley said, there are a lot of things our children need to learn aside from the academics that we're teaching them and they can certainly be taught some of this at home, but it certainly doesn't hurt to have it taught at school as well because they spend a lot of their time there and there are a lot of things that our students need to learn, including our young women, not only do they need to know that they're amazing creatures, but they also need to learn some self-esteem and they need to learn how to protect and defend themselves, not in a physi, not in a, a fight or flight kind of way, but to protect themselves, you know, intellectually and other ways and to, and to know to believe in themselves and that was, you know, when my daughter was in middle school and she went to middle school in, in, on the south side of town, you know, she had a lot of those same issues, she grew up in a single, I mean, I'm a single mom, have been for 25 years and so, you know, it's not just about socioeconomics and it's not just about growing up in a single parent household, but you do, there are a lot of things that children need to learn and it doesn't matter what their zip code is. Our young girls need, need to know how valuable they are and our young boys need to know how to be respectful and how to, how to, not only to treat, treat girls and treat their families, but how to, how to believe in themselves and not to ever give up in their dreams and, and yes, they can probably learn some of that in a coed high school, but, a middle school, but, but to see what's going on right now, it's not coed, the coed environment isn't really, isn't working for those children and those children need to be academically ready to go to Reagan and LBJ so that Reagan and LBJ will be just as successful. So, I know that there are folks in the community that are not crazy about this idea, sometimes we have trouble with change, sometimes we, I, I don't know, but sitting on this side of the fence, it just seems to me that we've got to do something different for that community and if we don't, you know, failing those children is not an option and the children are the reason that we're serving, that we're here and that we serve on the board, we serve on, as a member of the school board for the benefit of the children. And so, and it's hard and, and we're doing the best we can and I want to thank Ms. Bradley for, for bringing this to our attention a couple of years ago and, and helping us continue to move on with it as we try to implement this, you know, should the board decide to do that, thanks.
Ms. Schneider. Got multiple questions here. Dr. Karsarfen, did I understand you to say that the universe of students that we were looking at last year, last school year when the surveys were done was around 800 kids for both schools, is that correct?
There were two separate questions, the first question Mr. Torres asked me about was the enrollment of the schools, so I answered that and that's not related to the survey.
Okay, but we have some number of kids at the, both schools that are going to be taking the survey, or some subset of those will be taking the survey, is that correct?
There, there was a subset of that number that took a survey.
Okay.
They did do that and that's in here.
Okay.
And then what I was saying about the other surveys is that we, now that it's been, you know, from the fall, coming into the next fall, that we need to get very deliberate and targeted if, if the board is interested in seeing that, a post-survey after about, you know, nine months of engagement.
I got that, I'm, I'm glad I do understand what you said the first time, but still, I mean, the number of students at both schools was 800 or so roughly last, I mean, I'm not going to dispute 800 versus 801, but I mean, it was in that ballpark, is that correct?
So, you know, just to be clear, Gilbert, right, yet today, you, you did the numbers for the school year last year, what was the number again, do you have the exact number? Or can we, just so that we're not guessing, can y'all just find out, like can Paul or somebody just pull it up?
My, my point is that.
But it was around 900 for both of them.
Eight or 900 kids that were at the, the both schools last year and we have 460, 470 responses from the subset of students that took the survey. And it looks to me like we're looking at a, a rate of something on the order of 50 or 60% of the kids that responded, so, you know, to me, depending on how they did it, I mean, it's, there's a lot of variables there that aren't known, but it looks like a majority of the kids that were at both schools actually responded to the survey. Is that reasonably correct?
Reasonably, yes.
Okay, all right. I've got another question regarding the PowerPoint that was here, on page, starting on page 24 and going through page 28, you have bar charts on how folks responded to the, the questions that were asked and again, based on the surveys and the dates that you did them there, okay? And to me, it's very clear of the Spanish speakers, is the way you put it here, that 70%, page 27 is a specific example, responded, but the first point you made is, it says overall 61% of the survey respondents supported, in this case, school uniforms for single set schools. We've got it broken down by English and Spanish in terms of respondents, are you averaging the two to get to the 61% number that's used or the, it's the top bullet point on all four of these ones?
Right, yes, and Bill, Bill Creach, you're here, to get to the 61%, if I remember correctly, you looked at all the surveys, every survey we did, who said yes, and then that's how you got the average, right?
It's the weighting of the two green columns.
It's the weighting of the two green columns, right.
Great, so if we wanted to, we could look just at the English response.
Sure.
And say that in the case of, again, page 27, responding about school uniforms, 51% approved, 33% did not and, you know, the remainder said maybe basically, is that?
That is correct.
Is that correct, great, okay, good. I had a question about the CAC involvement on these campuses, I, I know that it was in the BWU or something relatively recently that I remember seeing that you met with the CACs from the vertical teams, but I haven't seen anything that said, you know, the CACs of the campuses or these particular campuses came forward with this idea or any other idea that, you know, they wanted to try and implement for their campus. Could you explain a little bit about the involvement of the campus CACs for this particular issue?
Sure can, Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, Trustee Schneider, Ms. Bradley also hosted a PTA, all the PTAs and CAC leadership meeting and you could invite everybody from the group, but we've specifically encouraged the leadership to come so they could go back and do you remember what month that was, Paul or someone, can you tell me what month that was, when we met with all the PTAs and CAC at, what's the name of the school? Blanton, anyway, oh, it's just kind of, but it was in the spring, kind of late, toward the end of the school year, I think, I can't recall.
Roughly right, it was late spring.
So, yes.
March 22nd.
Was it March 22nd, thank you, look at you, oh, you are good, thank you for looking up on the, the community outreach list, I should have done that, it's on page 22. So, we did meet with them in March and they, you know, they turned up, they asked questions, they gave us feedback on the presentation, things that they would like to see us add or, or take away, but, you know, people did ask, like can we, you know, can we come up with other proposals? Yes, did they? No. What, you know, we're, we're still going to try in our work group to look at, meeting the Facility Master Planning Work Group, I mean, I still, as I discussed with Ms. Bradley as recently as this past Friday, you know, I will still continue to work on ways to see if we can think about this, you know, getting a, a similar outcome but a different approach, but, you know, two things have not happened, one, no one's really brought forward a, a different proposal for us to try to vet, but secondly, you know, it's a, it's also, how can I say it? By the time we kind of finished out last school year, you know, with the summer, our work with the work group has been going on, with people who are committed to working with us throughout the whole summer and so, we've simply been trying to, you know, work through it and the impact on other schools should the, should the plan, you know, come forward. So, even within the work group and, and, you know, we brainstormed on Friday too, but at the end of the day, every time you try to change the model, I mean, you end up changing something very significant, which means you don't have two single-sex schools in an attendance area to address the needs based on the approach that, you know, that is, you know, attempting to support the kids in a better way under this design, so, and I, you know, and I, and I really don't have anything else to look at right now.
But for the individual CACs, I mean, this didn't come from their Campus Improvement Plan as an example, saying that, you know, we'd like to try this model to try and change things and move forward, is that correct?
No, I, I don't recall it coming from the CACs.
No. Ms. Schneider, you know where it came from, because you were sitting in the meeting when I proposed it to the superintendent, we were sitting in the same meeting, when we were talking about, it's, okay, we were sitting in the same meeting when I proposed, so you were there when I proposed the, the model to the superintendent and at that time we were talking about, we were looking at data and talking about what it is that we can do to move the ball forward and so, for me, that's the idea I came up with, because if you look at all of our data and you look at the disproportionality with special education and discipline and it's the same thing over and over again and no matter what the research is and no matter which university does the research, the research is the same. And so, we can continue to talk about it, which is what we consistently do, talk about it, but at some point we have to stop talking and we need to act. And so, in my opinion, this is what I came to, to see how can we change the game for these children and I still say this is the best way to go, because our boys are still faced with, with, there's a low level of tolerance in our classrooms and people can sit up here and talk about poverty, but a lot of it is race and that is just the bottom line. And so, we have to deal, we have to teach our boys how to deal with that as well as we need to teach our girls, because there's a low level of tolerance for them too. So, at some point, we have to stop that little treadmill of our children going into the Alternative Learning Center or what have you, or going into special ed, because people don't know what to do with them, but I do believe that this could be the game changer and regardless to how many times we talk about it or whether we talk to CACs, PTAs or whatever, the research still shows the same thing and so does the data. And as far as the surveys with the student, to me, sitting up here taking a survey of students of whether they want to go into this type of a model or not, 10, from the age of 10 to 14, really, I mean, that's a parent's decision, that's not a child's decision. One of the things that came out of the town hall meeting with the, the student from Webb, he point blank said that he did not want to go into a single-sex classroom, but he also said that it benefited him and as people were coming to the mic, he looked at me and he said, "Miss, I would not come to another one of these meetings." I said, "Why?" He said, "All I hear is complaining." He said, "You do not leave the decision for something like this to a child." He said, "I wouldn't have done it if the decision had have been left to me, but it wasn't." He said, "And I benefited from it and I would do it again." So, no, I'm not going to sit up and ask 10-year-olds and 11-year-olds and 12-year-olds if they want to do it, I will ask their parents, but I will not ask them, because we choose those things for them and we guide them. So, we can talk about this board until the cows come home, but I still want to sit for this community, because we have to do something different, are we going to continue to have this prison for pipeline that the Appleseed Project has talked about and all the other research come out and talk about, but something has to change. So, I tell you what, if people don't want to do that, you tell me what you do want to do, because we have to change it and we have to change it now for children, because otherwise we will have wrecked, we will have wiped out a race.
Dr. Karsarfen, I want some clarification on the operating cost and I realize you only had very rough figures, but it sounded to me like you were looking at something in, an additional 10% per year, is that approximately correct?
I'll have to do the numbers again, but for the two schools, yeah, I would say about 10% when I look at it, I'm just eyeballing it, but yeah.
And relating to Mr. Torres's earlier questions, you're going to provide a little bit better detail at some point.
Absolutely, yes, we have a work group meeting, we have a whole retreat, so I just need time to drill down.
In terms of the transfers, kids that don't want to do this for whatever reason, are we going to do an opt-in or an opt-out?
We're not, we, Mr. President, Trustee of the Boards, I, I'm not really sure what that means, but what we, what we will do is what we've done in the past around creating an, you know, an alternative assigned school, so when families, you know, make their selection, right, we know what they're, where they're selecting to go, so if they don't select anything else, we know that they are going to their regularly assigned attendance area school, so, but that would be part of our work, like making sure that we have, once some kind of decision is made or not made or timeline, however it comes out, that we take the opportunity then to give parents the information so they can choose their assigned, which school they'd like to be assigned to. And again, and if they, they don't pick an assigned, a different assigned school, we know that they're going to their attendance area and then we'll follow up and make sure that. area, and then we'll follow up and make sure that, you know, everything is, is clear to them about the options they have.
Okay. Let me just be clear about my concern here, in that I don't want to see a repeat of the IDEA situation, let's say, where parents had to explicitly opt out of going to IDEA. I'd like to see some clarity in terms of parents being able to, in enough time, select the school that they want their kid to go to, or the kid wants to go to, so that, you know, they, they don't have to be worrying about, well, am I going to that school, and, you know, I didn't know about it because of the transfer, or whatever else. I mean, some of the things we heard from the IDEA experience were, there was a lack of clarity about exactly how and when the opt-in and opt-out process worked. So I'm just asking for a very clear, very transparent process for parents to be able to, you know, make the decision about if and when their kids go to school.
Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, Trustee Schneider, I just want to be clear. We're going to use the same process that we would use for any other school whenever we are doing something that affects a site, and you have to choose an alternative assigned site. It won't be, you know, choice across the district. So while there are many opinions about that process, we used our regular approach for how we look at assigned schools when, for any reason, it's not part of our regular policy process. So that I will commit to. So I'm not sure what people will say and not say based on it, but our, you know, but you can anticipate a very similar design to what we did with the in-district charter work, that there is no other way to go about it. And in this case, you know, you're not talking about lottery or anything else, so it is assigned school, you're going to your neighborhood school, or you've got to tell me that you're not going to the neighborhood school. And I think everybody on this board knows how that basic process works if it involves an alternative assigned school. So I will, we will write out the process again. It's going to be far more basic, because we don't have a lot, like any kind of, you know, choice piece to it right now. But to be clear, I mean, I can't imagine why that might not be part of the design, you know, once you have neighborhood assigned kids, why wouldn't you allow kids who want to choose to go to that school to be able to come to that school? But those are details we haven't worked out, and you may very well find yourself, you know, considering some things like that, because there might be interest by some families in attending especially a single-sex boys' school or something, when we, you know, we, with the, if you, if you don't have something like an application process or something of the sort. I could easily see that being part of it. So we would be using potentially a very similar design, but we will write it out and try to make it crystal clear.
Ms. Williams, I have additional questions. I'm going to let other folks ask them. Ms. Parksdale.
Thank you. I lost my questions. Hang on. Kind of carefully written down. I think I'll, I remember one. I'll have to switch to that page. Can you articulate now or in later correspondence with the board, the, I think I understand the goals of the, of the single-gender schools, and we've heard a lot of discussion about unintended or even intended outcomes of single-gender schools, just kind of discussion-wise anecdotal stuff. But can you just articulate the objectives of the single-gender school, and how those would be measured, over what time period, and what we would consider success?
So, Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, Trustee Barksdale.
I lost my question.
The school itself, I'm certain, depending on the vision and the mission, would have very, very specific objectives and targets based on what the design is. So, I mean, they might have things, especially around, like, Goal Three, like college career life readiness, that might be different to other schools. But in general, the way we set our objectives, especially academic objectives, are largely driven, and again, from the strategic plan. The goals of this board, the requirements of the state and the federal government, the targets that we have to hit that are in the strategic plan, and every school, based on the population and the analysis of their academic and attendance and participation rates and things, and, and those things in the strategic plan, have to set very specific goals. But that's the structure we use for every single school, and this school will not be any different. They'll have to, at minimum, do the goals expected by this board. And, and of course, we strive to achieve our, and as part of that, you'll, you're striving to achieve state and federal requirements. And then the other pieces about objectives that might not, might not, it might be right for them, but not right for Merkison or Lamar or something, because like Lamar has specific targets now around the arts and things that other schools don't have. So I would expect that this school would too, and I would also expect that either, you know, in part, some of the initial thinking will happen with the planning team, and then it would, you know, move over into the leadership in the school and the CAC and the PTA, and they would help shape those things as part of what is required every year in this district, the campus improvement plans. So they'll have to do that too. No matter what, Pearson-Garcia still, even though you're re, you might be re, you know, restructuring or redesigning the academic programming, it doesn't erase their accountability stuff. So they're still going to have some things set by the state and other things that are going to be objectives that they'll still have to achieve. It doesn't erase where they are in state and federal accountability.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that it would. I mean, I think on the academic front, I would expect them to be completely in line with the strategic plan. But, I mean, this is a loaded topic, and I think that this, that going single gender is considered by some advocates an enhancement to the current academic program, or some enhancement to the current academic program, I think. So I'm looking for perhaps that connection either with, you know, gender, gender-specific, specific instruction, or if not the connection, if we're just, should expect to see traditional, historical, typical outcomes at these schools that they're performing at a, at a good level, and the gender-specific part is not an enhancement to that, or is expected to be an enhancement to that, then that's what the answer is. But just very clearly sort of laying out, at a gender-specific school or gender segregated school, what are our, do we have, are we tying that to academic outcome expectations? I think I'm not clear on that as far as the district is concerned. Again, I think we, because the research is, kind of goes both ways. There are other anecdotal, I mean, intended outcomes, and I, and I support a lot of what Ms. Bradley says. There are some things, especially for children of color, that aren't duplicated or replicated in other, in other schools. So, I don't know that, I don't know the research is going to support those things, but I'm looking, I'm asking a direct question. Are we expecting academic enhancements because of the gender-specific learning?
I would, yes. I would say anything that we do to change the programming at any school is expected to increase the academic outcomes for kids. So that is a yes part of it. But, but again, I mean, it's, I'm still not quite sure about...
Okay, I can be more specific.
Yep.
If, are we going to see fewer referrals, fewer measurable distractions in the classroom, fewer, you know, transfers to ALC? Fewer or more of these things that we think enhance an academic environment? Are those expected things? Are we going to measure those things? Or will, those will just be outcomes that happen because we think that they will, and we will, they'll just kind of sort themselves out on their own?
Right. So again, in a school like this, especially under, you know, accountability requirements, in school plan, in school improvement plans, those things are required. So in any, you'll see things like reduced disproportionality.
Right.
You're going to see things like, you know, we'll, we'll track teen pregnancy rates. You'll, you'll see things like the student, the student survey, sorry, I can't remember the name of it.
Climate survey?
No, the student, I'm sorry. Yeah, but the student.
The climate survey?
The student survey, you're right. So the student survey, like they self-report things about how they feel about school and bullying and things like, so all those things are targets that you see within improvement plans, and particularly, you know, certainly in a design like this. But because all of our schools struggle, I think it's, it's, it's more commonly tracked than, than most people are probably, are clearly aware. But we do track that.
Right. So would we expect to see enhancements to those outcomes?
Yes.
And will those be part of the planning for the school, something that's reported on regularly? Is it part of like a long, long or short-term plan? Are we into this design for the next 10 years, 20 years, no matter the outcomes, or if they do or don't improve, do we go a different direction? Like, what's the, what's the out plan if it doesn't work, and then what says we're in because this is working?
So every time AISD, you know, puts in a plan in a school, we work with the intent, I do believe, but some of you have been here longer than I have, so please share with her what y'all have done in the past. I think the intent is that it stays in the school, especially if it's successful, right? I mean, that's, that's one of the things where we, and that, and I was going to say that, and that was my second point. I've seen where we've allowed, you weren't here, but when, you know, multi-years of academic failure without, you know, change to the programming. So either way, once we kind of change something, just, I mean, I think despite some of the public perception, it's, we tend to stick with it. You know, and, and this is for the board to decide. You can give it a shelf life or not. You can say it's five years, and if it doesn't work, we're going back. It's, you know, it's part of the design that you can choose.
But there's no, there's no intention around that right, tonight, yet?
We don't have that in the plan at all, at least in any of the drafts I've seen. So it would be something y'all could talk about and decide on.
Okay. And then in terms of community output, there's definitely been a Herculean effort on the part of Ms. Bradley to make sure that we're hitting a bunch of tech, touch points in terms of making sure that those affected know about it, know what to expect, and know what's coming. What can we say to the community at large, folks who have participated in that, and there, and there is, there are mixed reviews? What are, what are we, as a board or as a district, listening to? We hear that there's this pushback. You know, do we adjust? Do we tweak, refine, or just press on, as Ms. Bradley said, she's encouraged about, you know, some of the feedback she's getting, but there's definitely, you know, some feedback where there's not a lot of support, or some, some level of not, not supporting it. How do, how does the administration proceed forward with that feedback or integrate it into plans moving forward?
Well, I mean, you've heard it multiple times. You heard it in the fall, you know, around this idea. It was, you know, and it was put on to the next process for engagement to get more feedback, of which we have. So to me, it's hard to gauge when people are ready to say go, but when I heard Ms. Bradley start off her comments, you know, you said, "I think we should take one step back," not multiple steps back, but one step back. And, and one of my questions was going to be like, what is, what does one step back mean to you or to this board? If you're not, we're not going all the way back to the drawing board, but we're, you know, listening and trying to adjust or not, what does that, what does that really look like, and what are we, what are we saying in the, you know, in this piece of the process?
If I may respond first. I think, I think that that is a remark I certainly hung on when Ms. Bradley opened up, because I think a lot of times people get the feeling you can't fight City Hall, this thing is just going to happen. You know, I'm showing up at these meetings and talking for no apparent reason, and here Ms. Bradley just say, "Okay, we're listening." I think I was, you know, just looking, looking to elicit what that means, not yet. So I had that same question, but I think for folks that feel like they're not being heard, it's, it's important to say that this is something that has been before the board. Lots of input has happened, and listening has happened, happening. So with that, if you can, if you want to, for Mr. President. Okay.
I was going to say, when, when I had originally talked to the superintendent about that in the meeting that Mr. Schneider and I were in, I talked to some people in the community about it first, well, afterwards, and asked them what did they think about it. Now, there were two people that I did speak to, which were part of print and radio media that was not pleased with it. But the majority of the parents and staff members that I spoke to were okay with it. So I'm not particularly sure, and you would have thought that they would have known me better by now, that when you say, "Okay, I'll move forward," and that's what I did. And I'm still moving forward. What I don't want is for a segment of a community, and I'm only speaking of the vertical, the vertical pattern, I'm not talking about all of Austin, because what tends to happen if all of Austin wants to, to, to voice their opinion of what's going to happen to only a segment of the community, that will not impact them whether they fail or they're successful. And so we got to be careful of that, because we tend to let people who will not impact, who will not be impacted, whether these children learn or do not learn, we let them make the decision for a whole community. So I want to definitely go on the record as saying, that's just not going to happen here. It's just not going to. Now, I plan on listening to that vertical pattern, the vertical team of LBJ and the vertical team of Reagan. And I really believe that if we can actually sit and just have, just an open dialogue back and forth, that I believe that we can actually get them to see where this could really be beneficial for their students. But no, I'm not including all of Austin in that conversation, because it will not impact all of Austin. It will impact these two communities. Whether these, the boys go on to ALC or prison or whatever, it will not impact some of those communities, none whatsoever. But it will impact those communities that they live in and those households. So I'm not sure if I answered your question. But yes, I am listening, because I don't want my community to ever feel that I would just ramrod them with anything, because it's just not the way I operate.
If I may add on to that, I think it sounds like listening means just continuing the conversation. I would say that makes me feel more comfortable than making a decision next month. I think that is a desired outcome from tonight. But having a more full conversation, however that's possible, I'm not sure Ms. Bradley had that, because you've done so much already. But just a full conversation and continuing to hear back, because I, like Trustee Schneider, I was so uncomfortable with the, with the IDEA work, because it felt like we were imposing something on a community, and I may be very uncomfortable. So would just like to, I don't know what the answer is, how you know when you're there, but I appreciate your comment regarding listening.
Well, one thing that, that we're doing is we're having a planning team, and that planning team is consisting of people from that vertical team, the people who will be impacted. So you're looking at PTA presidents, CAC, Neighborhood Association presidents, PhDs from UT, and, and, you know, various community people. The one thing that I've always said, and I've been, I've been consistent with this, because I do believe this, is that when you look at these two programs, there has to be a design and implementation, but there has to be a design team, and that design team has to have community on it. It has to be community-based. And, you know, of course, staff is going to be there, but there has to be a philosophy, and you have to have community buying into that, but you actually have to have the community developing that philosophy. And then you hire the principals by that philosophy, and you hire the teachers by that philosophy, but the community has to be the one that develop it. And when you do that, they take on ownership of the project. And that's what I'm looking at. I'm not looking at doing this in a vacuum. I want the community on board, because I believe that sometimes we leave them out. But when I say I want the community on board, I'm not saying every community in Austin, and I stand by that. I mean, the communities, the people in the community that's going to be impacted. And that's what you do. And that's what we're, and that's what I hope we are talking about doing, because I'm not going to go forward with anything other than that. The, single-gender school is not something that happened yesterday. They've been throughout time. So we're not talking about reinventing a will. There are models out there that we can copy, and we can do it right, and we do it well, but we're not reinventing the will. We're talking about things, schools that have, that are successful and have been successful. If you ever get the opportunity, I would say research the work of Dr. Jawanza Kanjufu. And I would say, if, if we could get books for the board, but I would say definitely research his work, and especially as we look at boys of color. But the research is out there, and there are good results in various locations. And so all I can just say is, boy, we have work to do.
Dr. Starf.
And, and, Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, Trustee Barksdale, one of the, one of the things is that, yes, it is true that there are many models around, around how we can do the design, right? But the design, as, this is... But the design, as, you know, one of the things we talk about in our work group a lot because we've been all over the country, as much as we can be. But we have not seen a design like this. And I just want to be, I just want to be clear about that. There's, I, I have not seen a design that take, that is an attendance area-driven design as the core of the design. And that's really where the kids are going for single-sex, right? So, you know, we have lots of attendance area schools, right? We have tons right now, but they're co-ed. And so just to be clear, we haven't come across one of those yet. And so our design in part is, and I'm going to see one more, I'll probably have one more school I can see, you know, at this point. And, and it's outside of Houston, right, Paul? So I'm going to, and I think it's on our list as one of the schools we're going to see. But that, that's kind of the last one. And it is not, it's not attendance area structured either. But what I think we're at least trying to glean from all these things is the programmatic piece. You know, the, how they did human capital. You know, what was the, what was the lead time? What does the curriculum look like? How did you, you know, if, you know, how did you set some of the more unique objectives and targets? Whatever, I mean, just whatever that, how did you get parents involved? But most of them involve choice, right? And that automatically eliminates this attendance area structure that we've been talking about. And without having an example like that, that's why in our work group, we, we have to spend a lot of time kind of guess, guessing at what may or may not happen. We don't really have anything, a go-to document or experience that we've heard from, from a school district that says, lean on this. And, you know, you can, you know, kind of answer some of your questions or use it as a, as an already-tested model. And in part, that's what we've heard from some of the, some of the people and even within the vertical team community, that they had questions about that. Could we, could we bring back a real example of this model? And I have not been able to provide that.
Okay, I think there's Ms. Moya, hand your hands up, Mr. Torres, Ms. Snyder. A couple have asked questions yet, I want to make sure to get to them first. Ms. Lavoy first and then Ms. Briston, and then we'll come back to the others for a second round.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm sorry Ms. Bradley isn't here right at the moment because I wanted to pay her some kudos for bringing some of these issues forward and causing us to think about these issues. And I appreciated her mention, there she is, of the apple seed work. I started that project about six or seven years ago, before I came onto the school board. And the catalyst for that project was our observation that so many boys of color were falling out of the system. And all we had to do when we started that project was look at the numbers. I mean, I, I don't mean to make it sound simple. It wasn't simple. But we looked at the numbers and we could see what was happening. And we saw that so many boys were being put into disciplinary procedures and they couldn't get back into the academic classroom. And that's what started our work. And I've been happy to see it get the kind of attention that it's gotten and to be a real factor in public policy. So I'm extremely sensitive to the issues that underlie this thinking and this game plan. And I want to see us do something because I do think that that's important. I have a question and then I'd like to lay some data needs on the table. The question is, are we going to proceed with the boys' version of the Ann Richards School that is being funded by outside funders? Who are those funders and when is it projected to come online?
Mr. President, Trustee of the Board, Trustee Lavoy. We don't know at this time whether or not we're going to proceed with the, what we're calling that proposal, draft proposal, is a school for young men. And the potential funder is the Moody Foundation out of Galveston, Texas. And, and again, they've made a commitment of about $4.7 million, but it's all contingent on whether or not we actually do the programming and those sorts of things. So much like this model, it started in the same timeframe. It never was considered for 1213, but it is in the hopper for the annual academic and facility recommendations for 1314.
Okay.
So, and
Thank you.
And so that would be the earliest. But, but again, that whole model, while lots of programming and things have gone into it, the key to that one is where would it be located? And so that's been a tricky piece.
Okay, understood. I appreciate that. I think that tonight you're sincerely asking for feedback. And so I want to be as honest with you as I possibly can. I'd like to, I think we are getting mixed messages in the public input. I mean, I, I think several other board members have spoken to that. And I just want to underscore that because it's fairly evident in the data that we, we do have mixed messages here. And it wouldn't be, I don't think we could consider it a resounding case for moving forward quickly. Although certainly there are other factors that haven't come to the dais that might indicate support in the community and other places. I'd like to second Ms. Barksdale's interest in understanding the metrics. Because I don't think I can vote until I know what the metrics are. In other words, when we do something like this, we want a needs assessment and we want goals. Otherwise, we're not voting for success, really. We're, we're voting for the unknown. So I'd like to see if you could bring back to us on paper what those metrics are. In other words, what's our, and I don't mind if it's high, medium, low levels of achievement for the things that you mentioned earlier in the meeting. What is academic achievement going to look like for girls, for boys? What do we expect, the metrics around instructing them in the kinds of behavior that Ms. Bradley mentioned earlier? In other words, I'd like to see us take this to the next level and get concrete about it so that if we go forward, we already have the plan on pa, the, the board work done on paper, which is setting the goals for these things. So I think between Ms. Bradley and Superintendent Karstafen, we've probably heard 12 to 15 metrics. So it's starting to lay those out. What are the high, medium, low levels of performance that we as a board could expect? And then as I read through the documentation, I think this is what we want for all of our students in all schools. You know, and, and I'm happy to move out first in Ms. Bradley's district if, if we believe the need is there. But in some ways, what we see here is what we want for all students. So I'm wondering, since we're getting mixed messages on the gender issue, since the academics give us mixed research, since the most recent research comes out of UT, if we could, if you could bring back to us an alternative that would show us if we achieved all of these goals for boys and girls in the schools they're in right now, what would that look like? Because I, I heard you say you didn't have an alternative on the table. That would give us an alternative. In other words, if we did some of the behavior instruction that Ms. Bradley talked about, if we did some of the, for boys, I think Ms. Bradley focused on boys. If we did some of the leadership training that we've done at Ann Richards for girls. If we included all of the elements that we have here, the AP, et cetera, et cetera. But if we just made a concerted effort and said to ourselves, "We hear what's coming out of your district and we're interested in providing this to all students without moving them, without choice, without some of the disruption that we saw around the IDEA approach." I think that would give us two options to look at. And that way, we could really, I, I think in some ways, we're getting hung up on the single gender issue. So let's just look at the option of not going through the transportation costs, the choice situation, which was a tremendous headache around IDEA. And, and then give the board some real options. I don't want to minimize in any way any of the goals Ms. Bradley laid out because I think they're all worthy. And I think that's what we want. And it may be that we follow the principal's goal, thank you for coming up and speaking to us, and that there may be some girls' classes, there may be some boys' classes, there could even be some leadership academies within those schools. I think, I think there's some additional creativity we can bring to this and think about it. But that would give us two markers. That would let the board think, reassure ourselves that we're achieving these goals. Because I don't think a single person on the board wouldn't want to follow through on these goals. But it would give us two organizational ways of approaching it that I think actually could help us. But I want to underscore my final point, which is, I'm not looking to minimize these goals. It's not what I've worked for in my day job for the last 10 years. So I think these goals are very, very worthy. And the question is, how do we bring them quickly to this, this student base? So just to summarize, the, the data need I'd like to lay on the table is a very clear metrics piece that would let us see on paper what we're voting for when we vote for this. And then secondly, this is option A. What would option B look like without the, making certain that we saturate Pearson-Garcia with all of these elements? Because I think they could be a model for other middle schools around town. I really do. If we do it right, we could put them other places. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
First, Garcia in itself had single-sex classrooms last year. And I'm not particularly sure about Pierce, but Garcia did. And they did see amount of success as far as academically. Now, I'm never going to recommend a program without thinking of the academic part of it first. Because otherwise, we could keep it the same. But one of the things that did not happen is it did not cut down on bullying. Fights did not dissipate. I'm not particularly sure with attendance, but some of those, well, Richard was over there last year. Can I ask Richard to step to the mic real quickly? Can we do that?
Talk to Paul or someone, I mean, I'd put Richard on the spot to have him come up here.
Richard is never on the spot, are you, Richard?
Richard is, is always happy to take the stage.
Are you, Richard?
But I want to make sure that he
Richard had a program at Garcia last year. He can speak to some of the things that he saw. Do you mind?
You all okay with that? Come on up, Richard.
Nobody, I mean, if you don't think it'd be
Good evening.
Richard Franklin.
Richard Franklin. I, I run the Youth Unlimited Program, which is a motivational program primarily designed to help young men tie education to success as they define success. And Garcia, where I did the program last year, was a, it's a pull-out program. There were a lot of issues that a lot of the young men were experiencing that they don't have an opportunity to express themselves in a normal setting. Over 70% of the kids I dealt with last year come from single-parent households, primarily female. They were looking for a male role model. You could tell that they were also developing those bonds as they broke away from their mothers, that, that kind of conversation. So they're starting to form those cliques. And what we were trying to do within the program was make sure these kids had a positive role model that was missing. And that seems to be what you're talking about here, whether we like it or not. A lot of the, the issues you're talking about are socializing issues that are affecting their grades. Many of the kids I dealt with last year, we dealt with in one session on the pain they carry around with them. And it's something that they've never had an opportunity to talk about. We had kids in there who were actually crying about the things that they're going through. And there's nowhere for, to express it. There's nowhere for, nobody to talk to about. I'm not saying we're an end-all conversation, but it really was cathartic for some of those children to have a man understand their situations and somebody they could kind of reflect those problems with. And that's, I think that's where you're going with this right now.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure where I can go from there. But I think Richard just put it into perspective is that as, and we could probably do the same thing for girls as well. But I just believe that we can have the metrics and we can look at the data and what have you. But it is what it is. And we can continue to talk about it and talk about it, but it still remains, it is what it is. So it comes back to board, how often and how long do we talk before we just look at, at exploring what change can be? And that's basically, basically what I'm talking about here.
Okay, Ms., Dr. Karstafen, I'll clarify, Ms. Briston. You want to clarify something? Go ahead.
I just had a, I had a clarifying question because what I, what I thought I heard from Ms. Lavoy was we need two organizational ways to look at the model. One is this current model, still doing this stuff around understanding the metrics and getting all this down on paper. And I want to be sure I understand, we are bringing back a second model that looks at not having single-sex schools. They are co-ed, but it's about, yes, the same metrics and everything. But I heard you say, single-sex classes. What, what are we, what are we saying in the second one?
I'm, I'm trying to think about a way, you know, we didn't hear resounding support for this.
I understand.
So I'm, I don't want kids to leave Pearson-Garcia and not get this. So not have this enrichment. So what I'm wondering about is if Plan B or Plan Two, whatever we call it, could be keeping the students in their school with all of the goals that we have here. AP, the kinds of things Richard was talking about. You know, the kinds of clubs where people can do these things and have these conversations. Some, I wouldn't want all single-gender classes by any stretch. What I'm envisioning is an eighth of the classes might be single gender, a quarter. Some subset where the academic experts tell us it's appropriate, it's helpful, that sort of thing. So that, but I'd like to see all of the students at Pearson-Garcia have all of these elements that we've laid out here. While not ignoring the fact that there are some, you know, I happen to know the issues pertaining to the boys of color because we've studied them, that there are opportunities to address some of those special needs. I went to a girls' school. I think there's a place for some leadership training for both genders that might have some specific elements unique to those genders. So I'm not suggesting at all that we have all separate gender classes in those two schools. But maybe just a small subset that the academics tell us is, is useful and that would give some opportunities. But, but you basically understood.
But to be clear, the, the Plan Two does not involve single-sex schools at all.
Correct.
And that y'all want, and that's what y'all want?
That's, I'm asking to have, you asked tonight, the purpose of tonight is for us to let you know what our thinking is and what our needs are. And so that's what I'm asking for. So, but you under, you understand, I believe, what I'm asking for.
I understand. I'm just asking, like, am I going off doing another model because one trustee wants it? Or does the whole board want it? Or, you know, I could spend a lot of time doing different things. And I just heard, it's not, I mean, I just heard different direction. So I'm just trying to get clarity on it. It's a lot of work. I'm happy to do it. Is that what this board wants me to do? That was my, that's my question. And I specifically heard, it's a Plan Two that does not involve single-sex education.
Well, I appreciate our president's laying out at the start of this discussion that there was an invitation for board members to raise these issues.
Right.
I think it's very important timing. I don't want to hold back. I don't think any member should hold back if there's an idea to bring to the table. And I expressly heard you, Dr. Karstafen, ask for other ideas about other plans. And so that's what I've offered. And I appreciate the And I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
So, maybe, are there other board members that would be interested in seeing some alternatives besides the, the one recommendation about single-gender schools? Ms. Parkstall?
I would.
Ms. Snyder?
I don't want to, let me caveat that. I don't want to, I don't want to stop progress on moving forward with the design that's been on the table, where input has been gathered for six months, where people are aware of what's going on. Just the thinking, just in terms of if there, if we get down a path and want to support the idea and the notion and don't have a Plan B, I don't think that's really smart. I think we need to have a Plan B. But I want to keep, keep moving progress on what we're talking about tonight.
Okay. Ms. Snyder, are you interested as well?
Yes, I am. And I, I think, just for clarity, the way I view it is single-gender instruction, where there may be classes that are entirely single-gender, as an example. Or there may be even a wing of the school that is entirely single-gender. But there are some, maxine at lunch, or, you know, band, or whatever the, the issue might be. That's the kind of thing that I, I would be interested in. I'm not, don't want to presume on what Ms. Lavoy said or Ms. Parkstall wanted, but it sounds to me at least that it's vaguely similar in what we might want to be taking a look at, just to examine alternatives.
Ms. Brister, you have a chance to weigh in. Would you be interested in that alternative proposal?
I don't want to stop whatever progress that we're making on this. I, I think it's a good idea, but I think maybe we need to finish exploring this option. And we need to continue working with, with the vertical teams on this proposal. Because I was at those, at that town hall meeting with Ms. Bradley. And she's right, it didn't go like we had anticipated. And it was clear that when we said community, the whole Austin community came out. So I think first, we really need to talk and get more input from those vertical teams before we start looking at another option. We've done a lot of work on this. And I'd hate to see it slowed down or delayed any, any longer because it's clear that we have got to do something in that, in that area. And I think that this is, the option that we have on the table is, is, is something that we need to continue working on. And I'm probably being redundant, but at this time, I wouldn't be interested in seeing another proposal.
Other thoughts? Okay, let me weigh in and then we'll come back to Ms. Brister. I actually would be interested in seeing the layout. I think the programmatic stuff Ms. Lavoy talked about, pages 6 through 14, I think is generic. That seems like that's the kind of stuff we would want to have. And then I think you have to lay out the benefits of a single school, single-gender school versus co-ed school versus separate classrooms and figure out what, because I think we do owe it to the community to say we've thought through the other options and why we think this is the best one. And I think we, I don't want to stop the path, but I think right now you have one option on the table. But I'm not sure I can say why it's better than the other two and what the pros and cons are relative to the other two. And then are there other model designs that you looked at that made you come to the conclusion that this was the best? And I think we owe it to the community to show that we looked at other best-practice urban school designs. And it doesn't mean that this isn't the right answer. But I think we need to make sure that we can demonstrate that we thought through other approaches so it doesn't seem like we predetermined an outcome and we haven't really looked at that. And so I think you've probably done that level of research. Because otherwise you wouldn't be bringing it to us, just as a single design. I think you just need to explain how you got here and what the other options you looked at and why this one you think is better than the others. So I'd be interested, you know, may not be trying to recreate a whole process. But, you know, why is this better? And what makes sense about, why is it unique for this consideration here versus Webb and Doby and Lamar and Mendez? You know, what is it about this particular neighborhood that gives it the unique considerations that we think single-gender middle schools is the best approach here relative to the other options available to us? But we'll come back to, okay, Ms. Brister.
I hear what you're saying. But my question is, besides this initiative, we have other initiatives for 12 and, for 13, 14 that we're looking at? And adding this, adding another piece to this? How is that going to impact staff and the administration? Are, are you going to be able to bring something, or will something have to fall off the plate? I guess it's, it's terms of time and resources.
Right. Mr. President, Trustees of Board, Trustee Brister, we are already having that conversation in our work group and as we prepare for the upcoming September 10, 16? What's the date? What's your next work session? I'm sorry?
September something.
September 10th.
10th? Yeah, 10th. Yeah. So the September 10th work session. And what you're gonna, we're gonna update and provide all the latest and greatest about all the AAFRs. But there, at least as an administration, to Ms. Brister's point, you're absolutely right. Capacity is at a brink. And, you know, we, as y'all know, we've reduced staff. We're gonna, we continue to try to do reductions and give people more on their workload so that we're not hiring as much. And so it is, it's becoming, for the amount of engagement that we're realizing about any individual AAFR, probably for the temperament of this community, we might be able to do one or two at most. And I also suspect that we're going to be recommending that we extend the engagement process timeline where we don't consider any AAFRs after, you know, we need at least a two-year cycle. It's very hard to be implementing and trying to start the new round and still doing engagement. It's, you're absolutely right. The capacity piece is huge. So we will, I just, I just want to be clear to Mr. Williams's point about explaining how we got here and why this is better than others. You're right, we didn't get here in part, you know, just because it was, you know, Ms. Bradley recommended, recommended that we consider it. Like I said, I mean, we started very early on looking at all the issues and practices when two ideas emerged at the same time. The Moody idea and Ms. Bradley's concern about the middle schools in District One. And to make a long story short, I mean, we ended up here because the situation for kids in those neighborhoods and the kinds of supports they needed, this did lean more toward a design like this. I mean, it, it, you know, and I wasn't convinced, and, you know, I'm probably, I can, I can argue for and against. But as we started getting into it, it started, you know, coming more clear that we had community issues spilling into the school, issues for the kids that at this adolescent age level, this could seriously be a model or design that could help children and families immensely. And we did all of that work, and that's really how we got here. I think the thing that you don't have in, in, in the same, like, explicit, like, flushing out of a design is if you were to, you know, keep the kids in their schools. We've had, we've had plans that we've sent to the state. We've had plans that we've approved for both Pearson-Garcia. And, you know, the outcomes have not been great. And we, we've kind of gone through that with the college prep work that we're doing today to try to, you know, improve the school as it is. So we can, we will pull all those things together and bring back the Plan Two, look at those models again, refresh all the metrics and, and think about those things. but we've kind of been living in that world for the last, at least my entire tenure and perhaps, you know, since it's been every year, you know, both of them, basically every year academically unacceptable. So.
Okay, well, I know we still have some dish for, Ms. Brister? Did you get your chance to weigh in on what you were going to say? We kind of jumped, we kind of, are you sure? Ms. Torres?
You know, I'm, I'm, I guess if you want me to answer the question, do we want to look at another model? I'm, I'm very sensitive to staff and time and, you know, do we really have the time to be doing both at one time? I think, you know, one of our problems we tend to run into is we try and do a lot of stuff and don't do any of it, we don't finish it. And we've invested a lot in this particular path. And I'd like to try to bring this path to a close, one way or another. I, I'm not sure the time that we're trying to get this school online is, is enough time just for that. But I know if we get sidetracked by another model, we're definitely not going to get there. But I want to speak to an issue back when I was cut off when Ms. Bradley answered a couple of things, and then a couple of things that she said that I think have, are some things that I want to point out from a research perspective and, and just talk about that. Because that's where I was headed when I asked some of the questions that I was asking. And, you know, we know what the concern is. And, and I'm going to define the concern as the fact that the students aren't sufficiently prepared to do well in high school. I'm going to, I'm going to say that's our concern. Okay? And we know that what we're doing at the school is not addressing that concern. In other words, the, the children are not leaving eighth grade able to be successful. But we're trying to do, and, and I'm glad you said something that you said because I, I have not done extensive research in this area, as you have and some others have. But being in research, one of the first things you always do is to see what else has been done out there in the area that you're looking at. And if you're working on a PhD, there's probably no one that's going to have done the work that you are going to do in your area. I mean, that's oftentimes what is defined, at least in engineering, is PhD work, caliber work. And so you have to develop a different model to assess what you're attempting to do. And so I'll, I'll use the example of horses. You know, when horses were used to get us down the road, people would, would use, they'd look at the teeth of the horse, how many hands the horse was. And you, you raised on a farm, right? You have some familiarity with that. And so-
I know where you're going.
I'll just go with it for now.
And, and so, so, so you have, you, you had horses. And then when you put the automobile out there next to a horse and you tried to use the metrics that you used on a horse to evaluate the automobile, the metrics didn't work. I mean, you, you still got down the road. And you could have multiple people carried down the road. But the model that you used to assess was no longer valid. And what, what we've doing and what has happened over time in, in education is that we, I mean, we've seen it happen here in Austin. You know, 30 years ago, the kids that were coming in the door were different than the kids that are coming in the door now. But we're still doing research using models in the past. In other words, research always lags reality. You never do research on future stuff because it isn't there for you to measure. You do research on what's been done in the past and what you know how to assess. And so what we're dealing with here are some non-traditional levers of change that I think Ms. Bradley and those more intimately familiar with the needs of the children in that area. And I'm not going to claim to be an expert in that area. I am not. And, and so you have these non-traditional, and Mark and I have used the term, you know, non-school effect. Some of these non-school effects, and Ms. Bradley articulated a couple of them, are impacting the academic performance of students. They're not the metrics that are evaluated when you look at traditional educational research. And so we're not going to, you're not going to be able to, and, and I would like to request that we get a copy of the book that Ms. Bradley suggested. But, but we're really looking forward, using a model to assess that is really designed and calibrated to look backwards. And so as we look at new levers of change to affect the outcome, getting to your point, Ms. Parkstall, what are we looking for? Really, the, the outcome we're really looking for, there's only one. Are they going to be successful and able to perform in high school? That's really what we want. Now, if they become, in the case of men, better gentlemen, or, you know, in the case of ladies, you know, more, have more etiquette or whatever, those are levers of change that help us get ultimately to that outcome. And so these, these items that we have identified in this particular model and the way Ms. Bradley and the community has, has developed it, we're not going to be having research that will tell us that this model is going to work. From what I'm hearing, it's just not going to happen. And so if we want to wait for that, you know, we're not going to get there. And so what I'm rapidly coming to the conclusion is that we need to, and I'm going to disagree with one thing that Ms. Bradley said. And that's, just one. And that's, I do think everybody in Austin is interested and concerned and wants to have input into this model. The problem is, as she said, and this is what I agree with it, we're not going to have to live that model. We're not going to have to send our kids to school in that school. So, so those folks that do are the ones that need to be listened to more, so to speak, than the rest of us that really want to improve the, the situation for these kids. Because I'm, I'm telling you, the people in my neighborhood are just as concerned about what happens in East Austin as they are as what happens here. But their kids aren't the ones that are going to be going to this school. So why should our neighborhood tell her neighborhood how that model should be developed? That's not fair. And so I, I think we will be diluting the resources that we have to try and answer this one question and either make the commitment one way or another and, and trust that the superintendent and her leadership team in working with Ms. Bradley truly believe that these non-traditional levers of change that we're identifying, that are different, and that folks like Mr. Franklin have sort of, everybody's got their own little piece of the bigger pie that they're all working on. How do we bring them all together in one school to ultimately get us to the end goal, which to me is having all of those kids leave the eighth grade being, being able to be successful in high school? And to me, that's the only metric. All the other things are levers of change that get us there. But they're not, they're not the goal you want to measure. What you want to know is, will those kids be successful when they go to high school? And how much more? In other words, is it 1% more, or is it, you know, 2, you know, 20 points more? So I'm, I'm supportive of staying with the model. I think it would be, you know, maybe helpful as we do the Moody work to, to identify the model that Ms. Lavoy is talking about, whether or not that would be something to help us to compare. But I do think we need to realize we're not dealing with traditional educational models. We're not, we've been changing in Austin for the past 30 years. And the children coming in the door are different in terms of their needs and in terms of how we should be providing them the education that they need. And they're different in East Austin, they're different in West Austin, they're different in South Austin, just a little different. And if we don't recognize that and adapt, and in some cases, it's a wholesale, wholesale school change that we have to make to try to do something different, we're not going to get there. And so I'm supportive of, if the superintendent recommends that this is a model that, given all that she's learned, are the levers of change and that we have fidelity to the model when we implement it, not changing it, you know, and, and ending up not having fidelity to the model, then I'm supportive of this. And moving forward, I'm still a little concerned that we'll get there by next September. But I know we won't get there by next September if we spend too much time working on something else at this point in the process. I think that suggestion should have been made earlier so that we could have either brought them both along at the same time or been able to compare them. But I, I just want to tell you from a research perspective, what I'm, what I'm hearing here tonight and what I've heard in looking at the research is we're not, we're not using the right model to evaluate and don't have the research to be able to evaluate what I hear we're proposing, or at least considering in this model.
Ms. Torres, I'm a little confused or concerned about one comment you made that, you know, this should have been brought up earlier. I think this is the second discussion that we've- I think this is the second discussion that we've had on this topic in this particular year. We did one in June, and this one tonight. Is that your recollection as well, or?
No, sir, I'm talking about having public meetings where people can recommend any model that they want. And we all are invited to these different meetings, and we could have brought these models up at that point in time. So, Mr. Snyder, maybe as a board, we haven't. But as a public, and we're all members of the public, could have brought them up then.
Okay. And the, at least the bulk of the meetings that I'm aware of that happened have been since June. Is that correct?
Mr. President, trustees of the board, in the PowerPoint, and I do recall, I hope that everybody went all the way back, these, God, what's the date? Thank you, you're so good, thank you. They, you know, they've been going on since November 10th, 2011. They're multiple days, different levels, you know, but it's more than a few, to say the least.
Okay, well, I think that the list speaks for itself, basically. You know, there's been some talk about the metrics, and to me, I think I'm somewhat in agreement with Mr. Torres, that the only metric that we can and should measure is how well students are getting improved academic performance out of the, you know, whichever model we put in here, whether it's single-sex, or, you know, mixed in some way, or traditional. You know, that is the sole measure that I think we ought to make the decision on. And I agree that we need to have metrics that are measured. But one thing I haven't heard is how and when we get to those points. So a concern that I've got about much that we do here is that we seem to go off on an idea that's new, change, radical in some way. But we don't really have the clear end goal in mind, or a system to measure how we're getting to that goal, and whether we've actually got there and accomplished what we set out to do. So regardless of what we choose, I would hope that we have some kind of either calendar in place or system in place to do those kind of measurements that would tell us how well we're succeeding on any particular issue of academic improvement that we want to look at. One question I had that remained was, when TEA closed Pierce, was there any kind of commitment on the district's part or on TEA's part as to the conditions upon which it would be allowed to continue to operate that we're beholden to in any way?
Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Schneider. For TEA, yes, we have a plan. Remember, they had, I think it's the management oversight team. My years are getting, that was my first year, so we had to do all the requirements with that. Y'all may recall, I think they even came here and met with y'all, but we had to meet with them every month. There were very strict requirements. And despite, you know, our advising to the state that some of the things that we were required to do from the state when we did the restructuring plan were not working. We could not change them. That was another thing, that was a real challenge. And, as you may recall, you know, the school, you know, had been struggling. But after we came out from oversight, we didn't have that many, the same level of requirements. But we are required to do, and I want to make sure I get it right, it's the SIP. Yeah, it's the SIP, the School Improvement Plan. And any of your, any of the schools in the district that fall in that category, we still have to submit those plans. We have to monitor those plans. They have strict guidelines on what we have to create strategies for within that plan that are driven by, you know, their policies and statute and all those sorts of things. So we still do that, and as a matter of fact, you know, we're doing the district improvement plan right now. So we have to turn those things in. So yes, we still have obligations, but they're not at the same level of intensity as they were before when we were under management oversight.
Okay. And I just want to be clear that it's a TEA school improvement plan that's required versus the school improvement plans that are done by the campus advisory councils on every campus? Is there a difference between?
TEA school improvement plan. And then, if you remember the year where they were, they still had, what was that called in Texas? The, it was our version of value add, but the funny name for it.
TPM.
TPM, Texas Projection Measure. When we had that, everybody, you know, kind of got the lift in the state. That's where, that was the year that Pierce made it. And because of that, you know, we were able to kind of restart the clock some, but then it went AU again.
Okay.
When the TPM was removed. So, you know, we just had that one year that, that's really what cut off the intensity of the state requirements.
Okay. But with regard to when TEA said we could continue to operate Pierce after it was closed, there are no conditions that apply beyond what you've talked about with the oversight management team, the SIP that has to be done for TEA, that kind of thing? Is that right?
That is right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's it?
Thank you. Dr. Kersdarfin, when Mark was talking about, you know, some additional information, like how did we get here, and what, you know, did you guys look at, and all this jazz? Would updating the white paper you did originally, or a year ago, a year and a half ago, be the appropriate place perhaps to add some of that information? Or maybe perhaps some of the information that's been asked for is in there that we just don't remember because it's been so long ago? And I was just looking for a way to help perhaps, you know, resurrect something where the information may already be around that we just don't have at our fingertips. Also, there was quite a, there was some conversation going back to the opting-in and opting-out options surrounding the IDEA program. And while I realize that this is not an opportunity to rehash that entire process, I do want to call to the board's attention that district policy on in-district charters that was passed by this board within the last year specifically states that it's attendance zone-driven. Specifically states attendance zone-driven. The policy committee had great, extensive conversation about this because we wanted to avoid any skimming, which is one of the things that happens when you have charter schools. So the policy is attendance zone-driven for a reason. It was a value that was brought to the board by your fellow colleagues, and was adopted by the board and voted on. So, you know, when, so this whole notion about attendance zones and giving people the opportunity to choose not to attend the campus in the attendance zone is no different from choosing not to go to the school in your attendance zone now. You just choose to apply for a transfer. You know, and so, and so I think if we can, you know, I don't think we need to continue to be hung up on that because we have district policy that directs us on it. And I wondered, Dr. Kersdarfin, when Ms. Bradley, excuse me, Barksdale, was asking about measures. I wonder if we could use the first-year measures and results from Ann Richards as perhaps a baseline to, you know, to gauge improvement, should we have a campus that's all girls? You know, I forget the percentage, 75% of the students at the Ann Richards School come from Title I schools. Now, maybe that may be, it may be valid for us to use, I don't know. It may or may not be, I don't know. I just wondered, in listening to the conversation, that's something that we have here. I thought maybe that could help us with maybe some academic measures, or, I'm not quite sure. But I thought I would just throw that out on the table as something to be considered if it hadn't already been thought of. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to back up to make I'm sure I'm clear on our discovery process as a board, and again, back on the community input piece, and to Ms. LaVoy's point. The point, I'm not sure about the point of this conversation tonight. I feel like this is the first step after we've gone through a significant discovery process with the community. We've heard, again, mixed feedback from the community, the affected community. And I have heard mixed feedback from the affected communities on the public meetings, but in contact directly to me. The research is mixed on moving forward with a single-gender school. And my understanding of this conversation, to Ms. LaVoy's point, was a check-in after discovery that began last November, significant outreach on behalf of Ms. Bradley, and representing the board's interest. So are we at that point now? Are we at a move forward, pull the trigger, we're doing this point? Or is this still part of discovery, this conversation?
For Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Barksdale. For the administration, it is part of discovery, having the opportunity to talk to the board. So to that part of your question, I do think, you know, this is a way for us to enhance, you know, reshape, you know, in some cases, you know, look at, you know, potentially another way to organize this. But it's also, that's one part of it. But we were also looking for clear guidance on whether or not, after y'all have heard all of these things, and you don't live in a vacuum. I mean, I speak to almost everybody, you know, multiple times. I know that everybody has been talking and engaging. You said you've got calls yourself, so it, you know, it's not like-
Not with each other?
No, no, not with each other, with me, with me. You know, I do, I do a lot of touch in with, check in with y'all myself. But, you know, but I really want to understand as well, you know, is there a timeline in the board's mind? I heard you say September was too early. I know Ms. Bradley was saying she would have preferred to see it done in June. We're in August. The earliest you can do something is in September. And so while I'm discovering, I also need a, you know, a bookend so I can work toward and make sure. There's a difference between doing 45 days of intense engagement, trying to touch all these things, and make sure we're leading up to something, which gets you to the end of September? Or a little bit like the CBAC, you know, is it further out so that we can, you know, do a little bit more? Is what we're talking about enough? That's the part, I've heard a lot that I can put in the hopper. But I also need to know the, you know, the discovery read from y'all as well. Have you heard enough where you're ready for some potential, are you ready for action? That's something I need to understand.
Ms. Barksdale, come back.
Okay. I will second my question, and I think, and I've heard it picked up on a couple of times around the board about metrics. And I think that I agree with Mr. Torres that we're looking at unusual levers of change here. And I didn't frame my question very well, or didn't tee myself up very well to get to the frame, which is if we're looking at those non-traditional levers we can pull for change, for improved academic outcomes, what are those? How are we going to measure them, and over what time? It's still the same question, but I feel better teed up after Mr. Torres said that. It doesn't, and to the original point that I made, of course, we expect outcomes against the strategic plan. And of course, academic outcomes come first. If we're saying single-gender schools pull different levers to get there, what are those? Let's make sure we're all very clear on them, how we're going to look at them, measure them over time, and what we should expect. That would be something I would need to know. Well, actually, that's not something I need to know to move forward. That's something I would like to know. Now, I think that ultimately, if as a board we do move forward, that would be something I would need to know before, like voting, yes, we're going to do this. Because, not sure who said it earlier, I'm not sure what we would be voting on other than kids of different genders are in different schools.
Ms. Bradley?
I can appreciate what I heard Ms. Barksdale say. Going back to Mr. Torres, and I'll have to agree. If we wait later than September, then I would say let's push that year out. Because the one thing that we do as a district is we do not take enough time for design and implementation. And I am not going to, I'm suggesting something that I feel will be some, I'm looking at a model that will be academically enriched, hit those soft skills, leadership, critical thinking. I even, I'd even like to see a community service component of it, where the kids are given back to the community instead of just going there, but actually have a community service component. And that takes time to plan. And when you're talking about hiring the right leadership, engage in community in that design and whatever, you can't do that in the shorter period of time that we're looking at, especially when you look at all the holidays and everything else that, you know, that encompasses all of that. So if we're going to do it later than September, then I will say, then let's look at a date of 13-14. I've always said, and it was printed in the paper, that I said, I am not that concerned with when it's done, but I am concerned with how well it's done. Because otherwise, we can stop the conversation now if we're not going to talk about opening something that is going to be electrifying and magnetic. And then the reason I say that is, Mr. Torres said, research lags reality. And I'm talking about reality here and not idealism. I mean, we never asked the question, is what makes Ann Richard, what made Ann Richards the right thing to do? It was single gender. So I, nobody asked that question. And not only that, every child cannot get into that school. There's a criteria, it's criteria-based. Even though there's a lottery, there's criteria that you have to meet in order to go into that lottery. So I am talking about a school where we're talking about kids in the community, but if there's space, it's open to any child that want to come. And that's what I'm talking about. So we're talking about attendance zone, but it's open to any child that wants to come. And I will give an example, and this happened to a child at Overton, where I hear that she was a high achiever. She applied to Keeling, Fullmore, and Ann Richards. Didn't get into any one of them, not one. Now, you tell me why we shouldn't deny, we should deny that child of something that can be just as wonderful in her community? Because she applied to an all-girls school. So that means she wanted to go. So why should we deny that child that? And the same thing goes with the Moody Foundation. Because I guarantee you, if it's going to be based on Ann Richards, it's going to have a criteria, and the same thing. So why should we deny boys the same opportunity? So that's mine.
Other questions or comments at this point? Okay, so I think the question on the table is about timeframe in September. And I'm going to, I think, and I appreciate Ms. Bradley and all of the passion and advocacy for this issue and the concerns. And I think you laid it out very well, the challenges. Let me tell you what, Dr. Kersdarfin, my reservation is about September, is I think we talk about we need enough time for design and implementation, and I totally get it. But it feels like we also need enough time for meaningful public engagement and analyzing the options. And as part of our Facility Master Planning Framework we approved last year, we have a calendar with six bubbles that talks about what we're going to do in December. And I think what we have to have from you is if you think there's a reason to accelerate the timeframe sooner than December. If there's something that you have to, I think that case has been made, not from the board sort of speculating and getting to feel, but really from you as the educational leader, about why is it important to accelerate the timeframe into September to make this happen versus December? And do we think we have the case made? And when I think about the AFR process, it's got about process, it's got timing. And there's a lot of things in here that talk about identifying options and problem solving, and what are the issues we're trying to solve, and getting community engagement. And I think it was raised tonight about the concern that we figured out the option and we're taking it to him, and it's the sole option. And I think, I'm not proposing that you go do all this research. I'm saying, how did you get to this one? I think we have to be able to make the case that says, why is this proposal, which I think is part of the business case you'd give to the board, better than a coed model, a separate classroom model, a model like Doby, a model like Webb, something with, you know, any other program? Why is this the best model? Why is this the best model? And I think what it's going to come down to is your recommendation as the educational leader that says, you've put together the business case for this thing. And it's not trying to do much data, but it's, you know, it's answering the questions that we need to answer for parents that say, what's the implication, at least to me, what's the implication of my vertical team alignment? I'm going to early college high schools, how does this fit in? What's the tracking pattern? How many kids, you know, if I don't go here, where do I get to go? What's the human capital challenges that we're going to have around this in terms of staffing? That might be one of the things accelerated. What we don't, I don't, I didn't see here is, I mean, I think it's an important part is, is the people side of it. You know, what's the human capital of the education, Austin, the ATPE, the ACTA, the people that are going to be staffing these campuses? What's their perspective on it as well? Because do we have the right people to fulfill what we're trying to do in terms of design, single gender? The facility changes and the equity, you know, why, what makes Pierce better for one gender and Garcia better for the other? We talked about the transportation, but the opt-out, and I was a little concerned when I heard you say that if I go opt-out and I go to another school and I spend three years there, that I then have to go back when I built a relationship with kids, I've gone to another school? Why would we not, why would that not qualify as tracking under our, as you talked about, this is our normal transfer policies? Well, if they've transferred to another school and they track?
I didn't say transfer.
What did she say?
The alternative assignment schools. And this is, I mean, and I don't want to interrupt you because I know you've got a list to go through, and I wanted everybody to hear it, but I just want to be clear that, and this could be part of what, you know, I need time to bring back then, because we have been looking at this, and at the same time, we don't want to end up with what we know is a reality at the high school level, where for, where some of these things feed, it does not, you know, it affects other capacity issues and resource, you know, limitations at some of the receiving high schools if you stayed in that, in that pattern. So I don't want to try to do that tonight because I don't have it in front of me, but I just wanted to say, I didn't say track, transfer. I did say that we would do the alternative assignment areas, and that does, I need time to explain that. But to be clear, if, you know, it is, I have to open schools, if you, kind of just, or do you want to? For us, I have, I like, we're doing this on this AFR, right? And what I need my entire team to do is to stop and open schools. That's really what I need to do starting tomorrow. I can do the 45-day plan and start getting planning, but I need to be sure that everybody is putting 110% on a very successful school opening. So if I just did the days on the calendar, right, to the second, at least to the break, which is in September, right? So, and all the stuff that happens when we're trying to do the counts and everything else, I mean, we might as well call it and say that I can't come back in September. I mean, you know, that's, I mean, that is the reality. I will have, after tonight, I have to turn around and just plow on opening of school stuff. You know, we did, we're implementing AFRs as it is. I've got to get, you know, we're still doing sites and construction and pre-K villages. It's really important we get that right. So if I have to, you know, if we're doing this, and I think that's a totally legitimate list, I was reading it and cheating off your paper, writing some things out, I need time to do that. I need a lot more time to do that. And so I would, I mean, I just want to be honest with y'all. I mean, I just, I don't think, I don't think at this point I would be able to turn that around. I can give you an update on September 10th, we do the AFRs, but...
Well, I'll send this list to you offline and respond to it. But my concern is that we're, if we're trying to make a decision in September, I think we, which essentially says we're going to accelerate the decision-making timeframe that we've made, we approved last year as part of the Facility Master Plan. We've got to make the case about why we think we've done enough work and that we're ready to do that, and we can make the case for that. And I'm not sure on this one, given all the mixed reviews and the uncertainties and the mixed research, that we can make the case, at least I, maybe me can feel comfortable to say, I can go defend that whole process and say, this is why going early here makes sense. But really, if you can get there, and if you may be saying you can't, but if you can get there and you can make the case, ultimately, I'm going to look for a recommendation from you. And I know there's individual trustees that may support this and some may not, but as the educational leader, I'm going to have to look to you and your team to say, this is what you believe is in the best interest of that community, and it's the best option available to them among all the other options that y'all as experts. And I think where Cheryl, to her credit, I mean, she is thinking something's got to change. And if she's the only person that's coming up with ideas about what can be changed, thank you for doing it, but that doesn't seem like that's the right thing. I mean, it seems like we can go to the community and say, what do y'all think? But it seems like that's what our team also has a responsibility to do, is to think about what are the other options available? And if this is the best one, that's okay, I'm okay with the right decision. But we need to make sure we can support and defend this is the best option among other options that we considered. If you think that we can't get there by September, I'm okay waiting. It may not be optimal, but I think it's important that whatever we do, we do well. And I'm concerned that if we accelerate a decision-making timeframe without all the answers, we are fairly open to criticism, particularly after we went through all of the process last year, approved a Facility Master Planning Framework that said December. If we can justify why it makes sense to move it sooner, I think we can, but I'm uncomfortable with it at this point.
Okay, I mean, also, I mean, for what, it's not like you're accelerating the timeline on this community engagement piece. This is one that you started a year ago, I mean, a solid year ago. So if anything, it was one of the ones that we said we were taking more time with, not accelerating. So I know we're into the next school year, but I, but I do think, I do see it differently, given that at least I feel like we've been working on it, and I feel like I know we've been working on it for almost 12 solid months. So it's not one in my mind where we have gone in and accelerated a timeframe for, it was supposed to be 12-13. We actually, you know, slowed it down. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I understand the AFR process, but I, I don't want the board to forget your policy obligations. This came up in part because of the multi-year failure of Pierce and Garcia. And I know that we're trying to make it fit in this timeline, which is great, but at the same time, you have a policy that says, when you have failing schools, we're supposed to be doing something about it, you know? And I can't remember that policy, but it's, whatever, that one. But we, but we actually worked on that one, you know, my first year because everybody was saying the house was on fire. So you kind of have two things happening at once. It doesn't justify, I'm not saying like, but I do think we, you know, just to be crystal clear with the public, if we have schools that are multi-year or in, you know, or in chronic trouble, you know, you probably need to not, because you didn't, you didn't waive your policy obligations, but you need to be very aware of the policy obligations you have. Because in my first year, our big issue was because we weren't taking as much action, the state intervened, and we wanted to keep our local control. So it is a very careful balance that's still not finessed just right, but I, but I don't think that everything in AISD, given how many schools are, you know, on that, have tipped over the scale of being in some kind of chronic failure or always academically challenged, that it's going to fit in this AFR process. It's, you know, we, we do not want to delay and get ourselves in trouble with the state again. And, and as a matter of fact, because of this very issue, we even talked about, as far as the framework was concerned, that we might need to add a paragraph or something in there saying, for schools where the house is on fire, the board, as a reminder, cite the policy, still has its obligation around multi-year AU schools. But I hear you, but, I mean, just given our, our experience, I do feel like this one is not an accelerated one. This was one that we slowed down to get, to get somewhere. But I do think, to answer some of the questions that have been raised tonight, September will be hard for us to turn, you know, turn all those things around. But we will, I still, you know, for us, I guess we are planning. If I, if I hear what everybody's saying is, plan and try to make September, but if we can't do it, then it's not, it's, it's, it's not going to happen, move it to a 14-15 implementation. That's what I think I heard in trying to summarize this entire discussion.
13-14.
13-14 is next school year. We'd have to make a decision now for 13-14.
Right. What's...
So just from a policy standpoint, make sure, what you're, if you look at our AI policy and interventions for low academic performance, and there's possible campus interventions, and there's a school redesign, and these will be recommended by the superintendent, which is a whole school redesign, and our policy indicates that, that the board should do that. To the extent possible, the board should make a decision on any recommended action at least one semester prior to the implementation. And you're right, it doesn't talk about AFRs, which was a separate process that came in our Facility Master Planning Framework, which is a process overlay on this. If you feel like, again, that you want to, you're making this and it's not, it's somehow outside the AFR process, you just need to make clear about why that, why this is different. And that you're coming forward with a recommendation, and then be prepared to answer, you know, whatever questions or whatever the board feels like if they can or can't vote on it and are comfortable with it or not. I don't think it, you know, I think we have to be careful that people don't perceive that it's not a recognition, because I think every board member's indicated their concern, they want to make sure that the kids' needs are met, that they're ready for high school, that we, we're doing all that we can to, to meet the needs of these children. But I also think that we have the fiduciary obligation to say that what we're doing in terms of spending taxpayer money and the business costs and stuff, that this is the best plan we have. And therefore, we've thought about through the other plans that would be available, and this is why you can make the case and we can support that this is the best option. And it doesn't mean you have to go do exhaustive research, you just have to explain why this one's better than something else. And then whatever level of commitment or analysis you feel like, I'm sorry, analysis you feel like you need to do to be able to respond to that. So, but I appreciate that you're saying you would potentially like to still come forward in September and see where it shakes out, is what I think I'm hearing you say.
We will, just to be, we will work on the September action. So the next 45 days, you know, we're going to map, you know, we're going to map out and take every opportunity, most importantly, if I heard, is to get to the families who are affected the most and make sure that, you know, we have a very good read on the adults, not necessarily the children, but the adults and their willingness and interest in this particular design. And then I'm also trying to work on this, you know, second, or plan to, I mean, some alternative way to look at strengthening the school, especially if this for some reason ends up being a 14-15 implementation. We still need to continue to strengthen the school. That's, that's a, that's a given. So we're going to have to still be doing something even if this, if this isn't approved for a 13-14 implementation.
Ms. Barksdale.
I want to make sure I was clear on something. I know we, you surveyed the parents last fall, November-ish. But looking at the community outreach stuff that's been going on, it's been more smaller meetings, other than the July 28th meeting, has there been a public meeting for parental input, like from the vertical teams, other than July 28th? Opportunity for, like you said, significant community input beyond our, the group, the community that is represented here, which is significant. But I'm talking about parents and the vertical teams before July 28th of this year.
Well, I mean, CAC and PTA are parents.
Yeah.
So, so that, and any parent could come, and we didn't say you can't come. We just asked those CAC leaders to help us really, you know, try to get people there. I would say that the town hall meeting was an opportunity. I certainly would say that the public hearing was another opportunity. We're going to have another public hearing, which will be another opportunity. And like I, and, and, and while I didn't have a chance to kind of go through the details, I mean, at least for what's been done thus far, you know, we, that planning team will also have community members and parents meetings, members. We're going to do neighborhood walks. We're, you know, also, like I said, having a second, another public hearing so parents could participate in that, and...
Was a public hearing this summer?
Yeah, I'm so...
I'm sorry.
It's on the sheet.
I didn't mean to interrupt you either, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, it's been before we started the school year. And then, and then here, we're directly going to parents and, and doing language sensitivity at the same time. We've got a ton of direct parent outreach. And I'll, and we can, and I do anticipate that we'll be surveying them all again after we do a lot of outreach, like probably in September, and try to do another touch point, you know, I'm sorry, in August and September, and try to, you know, get another touch point before any decision-making at the end of September, so...
Well, I certainly appreciate that look forward in terms of the outreach that's happened, especially with Spanish-dominated parents. I know that the Office of Multicultural Outreach has really stepped up efforts there, so I think we'll be getting good information back.
Other comments or questions at this point? Okay, a lot of input, we'll look forward to update. I'll send you some additional stuff just offline. I'll type it up and send it to you. Anything else? Okay, folks, we're scheduled to have an executive session, but absent, anybody feel like we need to go? I'm going to suggest we adjourn because it's, we went a little bit long on this session tonight. Okay. It's 10:25, we are adjourned. I got 10:26 on AT&amp;T.